Thank you councillors, Noel if you want to return to your seat, that's fine. I now open the ordinary council meeting on the 22nd of March 2022 at 7:15pm. I will now read the prayer and the acknowledgement. Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of Randwick and Australia, amen. I would now like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Bidjigal and Gadigal people who occupy the Sydney coast as being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to elders past and present and to any Aboriginal people in attendance today. I will now call for apologies and leaves of absence, do I have any apologies or leaves of absence? So you councillors, you can now see, councillor Hamilton? We have an apology from councillor Hamilton, I believe, for illness. Okay, can I now have a mover? Moved councillor Hay, seconded councillor Veitch, all those in favour of accepting the apologies and leaves of absence? Okay, declare that carried. Can I now have somebody confirm the minutes of the ordinary council meeting 22 February 2022? Moved councillor Burst and seconded councillor Rosenfeld. Okay, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Can I have somebody move and second the minutes of the 28th of February 2022, the extraordinary council meeting please? Councillor Burst and councillor Hay, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Councillors, are there any declarations of interest? Okay, I'm going to begin with, I'm going to go around the circle, starting with councillor Burst, councillor Burst?
Yes, CP1022, pecuniary interest.
Could you detail the nature of your pecuniary interest?
Investment property.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and councillor Burst, just before we continue, just for the record, could I just get clarification as to how you intend on managing that conflict of interest?
I will leave the, leave the room.
Thank you very much councillor Burst, councillor Sedg. Councillor Sedg, could you please put on your microphone?
Yep. My son played for Moe Reunited for about 10 years, I was on the committee at Moe Reunited, I used to be a coach there, we also won three grand finals. But, and I saw on the list there was, Mr Ian Robertson was speaking, but he's not here today, so I was going to mention I know him as well.
Thank you. Councillor Burst, did you have another one?
I had the same one as Danny, councillor Sedg.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson? No, councillor McCafferty? Councillor Olive? Councillor Olive, could you please turn on your microphone? Councillor Burst, you'll need to turn yours off.
Oh, okay. Yes, I have non pecuniary interest because two of the speakers are known to me, Mrs Jocelyn McGur and Mr Alan Griffin.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Rosenfeld?
Okay, with regards to CP1122, I have a pecuniary interest in that I own a house under R2 zoning, however, it is my principal place of residence, so I am allowed to vote on the matter.
Okay, thank you.
And in addition to that, in regards to my motion, NM2122, it's non-significant, non-pecuniary, I'm a doggo, I think, I thought I should declare that, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Chapel?
Hey, thank you, a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest in NM252, my daughter plays for Maruba United and I coach there.
Okay, thank you, councillor Luxford? Okay. Councillor Hay?
I'll declare a pecuniary interest in CP1122, my mother owns a property within one kilometre of the four listed properties, although on the side of caution and not vote.
Okay, thank you, councillor Veitch?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest, the speakers speaking on CP15, NM19, NM21, NM22, NM23, NM24, are known to me through my community work, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nielsen?
I'm not sure that I really need to mention that a number of speakers are known to me, so I'll just say I'm not going to do it and I don't think it will affect in any way my voting.
Okay, thank you, councillor Pandafini? No, and councillor Hamilton is absent. For myself, I have a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest in NM25 and CS12/22, both relating to Coral Sea. My partner now plays for Maruba United beginning this year and I will be voting on the matter. Councillor Luxford?
Mr Mayor, sorry, I forgot, MM8/22? My father attends Greek seniors, so, yeah.
Just one second councillor Luxford. Could I just confirm that it is in fact NM8/22 or it's the item relating to the Community Investment Programme?
NM, yeah.
Sorry.
823 is it, or 22, wait, sorry, I wasn't looking. Oh no, wrong thing.
Anyway, you'll have another opportunity to clarify that.
CP1422.
Okay, CP14/22, okay, thank you. And councillor Luxford, could you just clarify how you'll be managing that conflict of interest?
I'll be voting.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty. We now move to addresses of council by members of the public, just for the benefit of the public, normally it doesn't take that long, but we do have magic planning instruments tonight. I will now go to the first speaker, speaking on the Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal, Heritage Conservation, speaking against the matter is Ms Sophie Hale of 5 Severn Street. Just before you begin, Ms Hale, just I'd like to read a privacy announcement.
Of course.
In respect to Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause 522, 523 of the council's code of meeting practice. A reminder that video and audio recordings of this meeting are prohibited without permission and a person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audio/video recorder without the express authority of council. It is a reminder to any speakers that you will have a maximum of three minutes with a one-minute extension, councillors may ask questions of the speaker. Thank you, all yours.
My name is Sophie Hale, I am for the owners' corporation for the property of 5 Severn Street. I just wanted to distinguish exactly what I'm against. Whilst we welcome the fact that the building is no longer listed as a heritage item, it is my client's position and I've emailed a copy of the Urbis report, I'm not sure whether you have received that copy, that report, which was prepared on behalf of my client. At page 20 of that report, you will note that Megan Walker, who is a specialist archaeologist, stated that there was no remnants of stables on the property. It was in fact at number four, there's nothing to suggest that there were stables on the property and we ask that you take that into consideration, as well as the fact that the stone wall at the front of the property as well, we would contend should also not have any archaeological significance. The reason being is that it is crumbling and whilst we're happy to accept some sort of reconstruction of it, we would suggest that it should not be considered of archaeological significance. I just would like you to confirm that you do have a copy of that Urbis report?
Through to the relevant officer, can I please confirm that we've received those documentation? Mr Curialke, can confirm that that was circulated and we are in receipt, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Both those reports were prepared and last year I actually sent a further report in prepared by Urbis and as well as Samantha Polkingholm, which also went to City Plan's findings that the building shouldn't be considered of heritage significance. So we ask that you confirm that to go with City Plan on the basis of the building, but please remove it from the issue of the stables as there is significant evidence to suggest it was on number four and not our property. In the event that you choose, that you aren't persuaded by the Urbis report, we suggest that you move, you take some time and don't decide on the archaeological significance of the stables and the stone wall and endeavour to do some further investigations as this could have significant impact on my client's ability to develop their land.
Thank you, just to confirm, from a councillor perspective, we have received our consent here.
Yes, great, is there anything you'd like to?
Councillors, are there any questions of the speaker? Okay, there being no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call speaking against the recommendation, Mr John, I apologise if I get it wrong, Mr John Kastresos of 11A Marcel Street, Marcel Avenue.
And yeah, it was pronounced correctly, thank you. All right, my name's John Kastresos, I'm talking behalf of my parents who own the property at 11A Marcel Avenue Coogee and have done so for over 60 years. Thanks for the opportunity to be able to speak, thank you councillors and Mayor Parker for allowing us to talk about this matter. So basically, tonight, we've been asked to consider commencing a planning proposal for the heritage listing of 11A Marcel Avenue Coogee. I wish to raise my family's serious concerns about the transparency of the process and aspects of procedural fairness, so request councils to defer this matter for at least a month. My name, my father and mother have owned the property for over 60 years, my father is 85 years of old and we've basically been in the local community for over 100 years. The problem that I don't think the councillors or the council understand is the property has experienced ongoing significant structural damage as a result of a very old major council stormwater asset which runs right under the property. Council would be aware of this, there's history and reports going back 30 years of the stormwater failing, of retaining walls being broken, they've tried to rectify it on numerous occasions. To give you an idea, the property drops down 12 and a half metres to the southern boundary and there's a retaining wall that holds up the building that precariously sits on a rock face. And we believe that the council stormwater has significantly damaged the footings and has caused significant damage to the property. So for that reason alone, we want the opportunity to put forward our reports to clarify all that. We've engaged an independent engineer, engineering advice regarding the safety and remediation works required for the building. The building continues to show significant signs of structural damage and we're concerned that we will very soon need to move out the tenants, move the tenants out of the property. Because of the issues with the structural stability of the building and excessive, almost impossible cost of rectification, we lodged an application with the council to demolish. We are shocked to discover that this matter has been listed tonight to prepare a planning proposal to list. We received an independent heritage order on the 6th of March 2022, 10 days later, it's on the agenda. The owners, my parents, had no forewarning, were not given a copy of a council report or any consultant's heritage advice from City Planning, none of this. We only by chance stumbled across this when our solicitor viewed this on the council's website. So we feel that it is an unfair and serious breach of natural justice, which is why we are asking for a deferral to allow us to complete our submission. It feels like the neighbours have...
Granted one-minute extension.
Thank you, all right, we'll go on. Basically, the owners, basically for the council, the owners have already commissioned independent heritage and engineering advice in relation to the current live DA which has been considered by the panel. This was agreed with council and the panel that the owners would be able to submit these reports. For council now to perceptuously, before these reports have been finalized to submit, again is a breach of procedural fairness. On this basis, we ask this matter to be deferred. We want to include, if we are granted the extension, a report by Stephen Davis, Director of Urbis, former Chair of Heritage, outlining the lack of suitability for buildings to be listed, reports by qualified engineers regarding the structural integrity of the building. reports by qualified engineers regarding the structural integrity of the building and further structure and other reports in regards to the council's stormwater assets and its failures. QS report outlining the costs the council assessed that has caused the property. We ask that the councillors and their engineers inspect the property and show them exactly what the issues are and the problems that we have with this building. More importantly, Randwick Council, community and heritage architects have all walked the streets of Marcel Avenue on many occasions and eleven A Marcel Avenue has never been mentioned once or picked out to be unique. I refer to the following recent heritage reports. In June two thousand and twenty, by Extend Heritage, was commissioned by Randwick Council and the community. And CP eleven twenty-two, which mentions fifty-seven items of heritage significance and again eleven A Marcel Avenue was not listed.
If you could begin wrapping up, that would be fantastic.
We have sought independent heritage advice and we want to confirm that the building is not of significant. The only reason why it's been mentioned is because we put in a lodge of the DA for demolition and for that reason alone, an interim chairing order was placed on the property. We want the councillors to be able to come down, or the engineers from Randwick Council, to come down and inspect the property and understand our problems and the issues that we've got with this building. And we want to table the reports and the engineers from Randwick Council have copies of these reports showing that the structural damage that that asset has caused to the property.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions of the gentleman? Okay, there being no questions, thank you very much.
Can I just, has everyone got a copy of this, of this PowerPoint presentation? Is that something that everyone's been privy to?
That was just shown in the background behind you, yes?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will now call the third speaker, Mr Ryan Elliott, speaking against the recommendation regarding twenty-one Baden Street Coogee.
Thank you, councillors and mayor. So speaking against the amendment to remove twenty-one Baden Street from the heritage exhibition, we could move to slide two. Extend Heritage Advisors commissioned by the council in twenty-one as part of the council's heritage review, found twenty-one Baden Street to be a good candidate for heritage listing based on a number of factors and that it should be prioritised for listing. In May twenty-one, council included this property in the draft LEP for exhibition, despite at the time a property developer arguing for twenty-one Baden Street's exclusion. A separate advisor, City Plan Heritage, have now provided an additional briefing dated Jan twenty-two, advising they view the building does not meet the threshold for listing, contrary to the original report. Slide three. In their report, City Plan Heritage advised that based their decision on a desktop basis, stating the interior of the building was not accessible, but desktop research indicates the building contains some decorative elements, ceilings, fireplaces dating from nineteen thirty-six, polished joinery which may have been painted. The building contains timber-framed windows, including lead light panels, which appear to date from nineteen twenty-five. City Plan Heritage state that twenty-one Baden Street does not meet the threshold for listing as a heritage item under criterion B, historical association significance. Slide four. Twenty-one Baden Streets associated with Gladys Hill, she was also known as Lady Jointon Smith and her de facto husband, Sir James John Jointon Smith, KBE. Gladys purchased the site in nineteen twenty-five and Sir James Jointon Smith put the building application in three months later. S.H. Buchanan designed the house in nineteen twenty-five and S.H. Buchanan returned in nineteen thirty-seven to adapt the house into flats for Jointon Smith and his adopted children. City Plan Heritage assert that although he resided at twenty-one Baden Street from nineteen twenty-five until his death in nineteen forty-three, he was primarily associated with Hastings, the Coogee residence he occupied only until nineteen twenty, which he then made available for the treatment of shell-shocked soldiers. The place Baden, twenty-one Baden Street, is not associated with Jointon Smith's specific achievements in publishing or politics. This statement is incorrect. Whilst residing at twenty-one Baden Street, he owned and developed a Victoria Park racecourse in Zetland. In addition to horse racing, this was the site of the first powered flight in Australia. He funded the development of Professional Rugby League in its early years, was president of New South Wales Rugby League and patron up until nineteen forty-three. He founded the charity which established Royal South Sydney Hospital, of which he was a director until his death in nineteen forty-three. The hospital ran from nineteen twelve until it was merged with the Prince of Wales Hospital in ninety-one to ninety-three, having been located at three Jointon Avenue. He acquired and owned the Carrington Hotel in Cootumbe. He electrified Cootumbe by the building of a powerhouse behind the Carrington Hotel. He was the nineteen twelve to nineteen thirty-four member for the New South Wales Legislative Assembly. And he also established Smiths Newspapers Limited, employing a Robert RC or Clyde Packer, who had gone on to form the Packer Media Dynasty. He backed Sydney's first radio station, Two SB or Two BL, which was based in Smiths Weekly Building. And he completed his purchase of the Imperial Arcade, the Arcadia and the Imperial Arcade, which he held until nineteen forty-one. Fish Street in Coogee becomes Arcadia Street based on his Arcadian hotel owning.
Agreed, one-minute extension.
Thank you. In nineteen twenty-six to thirty-seven, he acquired Hotel International in Bondi and renamed it Astra. His autobiography was published in nineteen twenty-seven. Ultimately, Sir James John Jointon Smith, KBE, resided at lot eight, being twenty-one, sorry, slide five. I've lost my place, apologies. Resided at lot eight, twenty-one Baden Street, for eighteen eventful years of his life versus thirteen years at the neighbouring Hastings building, now thirty-nine Arcadia Street. Picture today shows the addition of Famer Gardens, a twelve-storey block of units constructed following the nineteen seventy-eight subdivision. We've lost a lot, Imperial Arcade, Victoria Park, Royal South Sydney Hospital and the gardens at Hastings. We would ask that the council reject this amendment and re-include twenty-one Baden Street for heritage exhibition. You don't demolish Abbey Road because the Beatles' formative years were in the Cavern Club. Abbey Road is just a building, but it's who lived and worked there that makes it remarkable and worth saving. If Jointon Smith's achievements don't constitute historical association significance, then what does? Thus, would ask this amendment be moved in an amended form, deleting reference to twenty-one Baden Street and retaining on the list for heritage exhibition as previously approved.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? Okay, there being no questions, thank you very much, Mr Elliott.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll now call the next speaker, Mr Chris Hanson, to the microphone, speaking to CP fifteen slash twenty-two. Mr Hanson, I note that you're speaking on three motions this evening. I would just ask, are you comfortable addressing all three in order? I'm happy to grant a little bit extra time in terms of doing it, but are you happy to do the three at once? Or would you prefer to do?
Yes, that'd be fine, thanks, Mr Mayor, I'd be happy to do that.
That's fine. So just for the benefit of the meeting, we are referring to CP fifteen slash twenty-two, Protection of the Environment Operations General Amendment, Thermal Energy from Waste Regulation Council's submission, number one. Number two is NM slash twenty-two, twenty-two. Notice of motion from councillor Veach, motion for the twenty-twenty-two National General Assembly of Local Government Promoting Circular Economy and Opposing Waste to Energy Incinerators. And then the third item is NM twenty-three, no, sorry, NM twenty-four slash twenty-two. Notice of motion from councillor Veach, motion for the twenty-twenty-two National General Assembly of Local Government Gas Decarbonisation Roadmap. Thank you. Councillor?
Just a question, sorry, just to clarify the way that our experienced speaker will be dealing with the three matters. Will he say, and now I'm speaking about such and such? Is that how you will do it? Thanks very much.
Yeah, I think that's the clearest way.
It would help me, Mr Mayor, if you could just give me a timing on each motion.
That's fine. Okay. Mr Hanson, all yours.
Thanks very much, Mr Mayor, and thanks councillors for the opportunity to speak to the meeting tonight. And also a thank you to council for the provision of the branded truck at the Botany Aquatic Centre yesterday for our photo opportunity. We really appreciated that and those photos will be posted, I believe, on council's website fairly shortly. The first motion I'm speaking to is with respect to the council's submission to the New South Wales EPA Draft Regulation. And I'd just like a point of clarification, Mr Mayor, has this letter actually been submitted to the EPA yet?
Through to the relevant officer, Mr Kurialku.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, no, not as yet.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I read through both the supporting papers and the letter going to council and there was one statement in the letter. Council supports the intent of the draft regulation to restrict location of waste to four designated precincts. And I guess I'm raising some concerns with that statement in that council has undertaken to be one-hundred percent green energy and yet, on one hand, we're going for one-hundred percent green energy, on the other hand, we're saying it's okay to burn waste outside the LGA. And I did without notice, and I do apologise late this afternoon, put forward a suggested amendment which would clarify council's letter. I was not aware at the time that the letter, whether the letter had been sent or not. And so I guess from our perspective, yes, we don't want any incinerator in Matreville, that's a given. We also don't want any incineration anywhere else, given that there is a viable alternative. And I guess from the basis of the following two motions which I'll be speaking to, council is supportive of a circular economy and the alternative to burning stuff is to have a circular economy. Already council has demonstrated that we can save twenty-five percent of material going to landfill by simply separating out our FOGO, our food organics and garden organics waste. And we haven't even just started. You can imagine what we can do when we get all of the supermarkets and all of the other generators of fresh food that is thrown out at the end of the day on that scheme as well. So I guess I'm requesting council just clarifies that point, given council's very strong support in the past for a circular economy and also for the support of no incinerators, which has previously been passed as motions in council. I'm happy to take any questions, Mr Mayor, on that.
Are there any questions for Mr Hanson? Okay, all right.
There was one question.
Councillor Veach.
Thank you for coming to speak. So just clarifying, you would like the councillors to support the motion, which is more or less, the submission rather, which is more or less in alignment or in alignment with the one that has been discussed at the precinct committee meetings, put forward to the community via Facebook and social media, discussed with the councillors and which I understand individual councillors seem to have more or less been supporting in terms of spreading the word on your submission through the community.
Yes, that's correct, councillor Veach. Obviously, Matreville precinct is very strongly anti-incinerator and we would like council to continue that support, not only within the LGA, but also to demonstrate and set an example for the rest of the Sydney area, in fact, New South Wales, with respect to this regulation, that incineration has no place in our modern society and is totally unnecessary. As I mentioned before, when I was speaking at last meeting, even medical waste does not need to be incinerated to treat it. So that is an alternative, there are viable alternatives and alternatives which can bring great benefit to the Randwick LGA and other LGAs in terms of permanent skilled jobs. So I do request council reconsider the proposed submission in that light.
Thank you. There being no further questions on this particular one, we'll now move to NM twenty-two slash twenty-two. The motion for the twenty-twenty-two National General Assembly of Local Government promoting the circular economy and opposing waste to energy incinerators, Mr Hanson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, this is a very important motion for the National Conference and it demonstrates once again council's support of a circular economy and also the second part of that motion, which is to remove the subsidies that are being given to promote the incineration of waste within Australia. I believe this is very important because the National Conference will be sending a direct message to the Australian government that incineration of waste has no place in Australia and we certainly don't need to be subsidising it. Off the top of my head, from the last Senate Estimates Committee that I heard, where Minister Keane, at that time was Minister for Environment, confirmed that something in the order of seven hundred and fifty-eight million dollars of our waste levies were collected by government and this money, along with other federal funds, is being used partly to subsidise waste management companies. And to me, that is an obscene, I guess, in one way, use of taxpayers' funds which were never meant to be used in that manner. The first part of the motion in terms of establishing a circular economy is critical for the thrust and for the purpose of the LGA, the National LGA, and supports other councils that have also submitted motions along those lines. As I've already mentioned, we do have an alternative, there's even an alternative for medical waste that's available. It's available right here in New South Wales. We have alternatives for all sorts of dry material which we currently call waste. We're trying to turn our economy from being a linear, use it once, throw it away economy into a robust, hardened, supply chain hardened economy where we never run out of materials because we're actually reusing and designing materials to be remanufactured. I was asked on air yesterday, you know, okay, you've cited an example where you're making flooring out of used timber, what about all the rest of the stuff? And the reality is, is that if items that we currently purchase and buy are designed to be remanufactured, those materials can be recovered. Our solar panels can be remanufactured and recovered. Professor Vina Sachwala from UNSW is working on processes and has patented and proven processes to actually mix and blend plastics, mixed plastics, which from an engineering point of view is a holy grail. Be able to take mixed plastic waste, combine it with our mixed fabric waste and design building materials from it. And those building materials are currently being used as internal finishes in apartments as we speak. So there is an alternative to burning stuff and it goes way beyond just recycling timber.
One-minute extension, Mr Hanson.
Mr Mayor, I'd be happy to take any questions on that motion.
Are there any questions for Mr Hanson? Okay, there being no questions, thank you very much. I'll now ask you to move to the third item you're speaking on, NM twenty-four slash twenty-two. Motion for the twenty-twenty-two National General Assembly Gas Decarbonisation Roadmap.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. So I guess by now we're saying, well, we've had so many motions on anti-incineration, what do we need another one for? And I guess the important thing with this motion is that it's the end game. We're looking at moving to a hydrogen economy. Already, Andrew Forrest is designing an eight-hundred-megawatt dual-fuel power station to be located in Port Kembla. It will run on natural gas and hydrogen so that it can transition from a fossil fuel economy we're currently used to to one where we're running on hydrogen. We need help to do that. And we really, really would like to use some of the hundreds of millions of dollars which the federal government has got to help local councils design and promote the use of that within their own LGAs. From an engineering perspective, hydrogen is no different to petrol or diesel or natural gas. It's another fuel and unlike its earlier uses where we all remember that what happened to the Hindenburg, it is used in a completely different way and is now completely safe to use. So from an engineering perspective, I have no trouble firing a boiler with hydrogen or a car or a truck or a plane. It's the same as using diesel or avgas or natural gas. So we shouldn't be afraid of a hydrogen economy. It is the future, it is the way in which we can actually grow and harden our society against climate change. And I would certainly request that council supports this motion and shows again Randwick Council's credentials and very strong focus on environmental management and achieving good environmental outcomes. Mr Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions any councillors may have about hydrogen or its use.
Councillors, are there any questions? Councillor Veach.
Thank you and thank you for coming to speak and support.
Thank you and thank you for coming to speak and support of this motion. Obviously, there has been some discussion about this locally because the, you know, the current paper mill is powered by gas, you know, the heating process requires gas and obviously gas is now very expensive, which is presumably one of the reasons why they are looking for alternative energy sources. So there has been some thought that, oh, we should be sticking with gas. But from your knowledge, there are actually viable alternatives. We don't need to use gas and we don't need to use an incinerator. We can be with the support, because obviously it is expensive, of the federal government moving towards 100% renewable for these highly intensive energy processes.
That's correct there, thanks, Council of Each. Yes, look, the Opal Paper Mill, and I put this to Suez a long time ago, they could easily buy power from Andrew Forrest Hydrogen Power Station in Port Kembla and they could generate, use electricity to heat water into steam, which is what they need, they need large amounts of steam and that's what they use in their process. They do not need to fire their boiler with gas and they most certainly don't need to fire it using dried waste, which is the least efficient, most expensive and most polluting form of energy that they can use. It is practical, they can even convert their boiler to actually fire on hydrogen, but from a process engineering point of view, they get most bang for their buck if they simply convert their boiler to an electrical source using a green hydrogen-based energy. It's not a big deal, the technology exists, it's cost effective. At the moment, they're getting, have a deal going with Suez to have an incinerator there because it's convenient and they've done it in Victoria. There is no other logical reason for having an incinerator on that site. They've got an area for it and that's their main rationale in terms of getting that incinerator installed there.
Thank you. Is there all questions? Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Mr Hanson.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the next item, CP16/22, induction of Leah Purcell into the Australian film Walk of Fame at the spot. Randwick speaking in favour, Mr Eddie Tamir. It's coming in via, oh hello, via video link.
Can you all hear me?
We can.
Great. Thanks for listening. This is a good news story really, which we all need. We're so excited at the possibility to refresh this initiative of the Australian Walk of Fame. I understand that there was an Australian Film Festival previously, which has been mothballed. But I guess now, we, you know, we're putting a lot of, as the council would know, a lot of energy, a lot of resources behind rejuvenating the Ritz to move it from a shabby icon into the cinema culture hub of Sydney, hopefully. And the, I think what's interesting in relation to the past is that the Ritz is now bringing the best of Australian film to the Ritz all year round, not necessarily clustered around a film festival. So, like The Drover's Wife and the Australian premiere of The Drover's Wife at the Ritz, and of course Leah Purcell is a worthy creative, as you have in your report in terms of her CV, and she's only mid-career, so it's only going to get better. So we are obviously in support of the motion. It is, it happens to be the Ritz's 85th year, 85th birthday this year in July. As part of our celebration, we are exclusively screening 50 Australian classic films in 35mm, which is a very original thing to be doing, including films from the 70s and 80s like Breaker Morant, Newsfront and Chant of Jimmy Blacksmith. So we're going to be screening one a year, one a week for a year. And this is from an archive that is a Kodak initiative originally, now AtLab and Deluxe, of 35mm restorations that have generally not been seen in Australia. So it's very exciting and many, many creatives and actors are going to be presenting those films and we have an opportunity to extend the Walk of Fame around the block and make it ever more meaningful and make it meaningful at a Sydney level and not just a Randwick shire level. And I guess, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the council for supporting our renovation and expansion of the Ritz, to make, as I said, the Ritz a cinema culture hub, not just of Randwick but of Sydney, and not just have the Randwick Ritz as a walk in the past, a nostalgic walk to the past, but make it a contemporary, relevant cinema. And we believe that the Walk of Fame is a way to present that to Sydney, to wider Australia and to perhaps world tourism. And again, we have three cinemas in Melbourne, we have three different councils and this has nothing to do with this presentation, but it's a general comment and I just want to take the opportunity to say that in our experience, the Randwick Council is, has been incredibly proactive versus your Melbourne brethren in relation to culture, in relation to supporting heritage and cinema-related community centres like the Ritz.
Thank you very much, Mr Tamir. Are there any questions?
Not so much a question, but I want to thank Eddie Tamir for also having a fantastic Jewish International Film Festival at the Ritz, once again in the Randwick LGA and bringing a lot of visitors into the Randwick LGA that basically then patronised the nearby cafes and restaurants. So thanks once again, Eddie, and once again a fantastic Jewish International Film Festival.
I will very generously interpret that as a question. Thank you.
I'll respond very quickly, I mean, again, for what we're trying to, it's unique, original programming and the Jewish Film Festival is our initiative and it is not just me, so I'm speaking on behalf of our team, it is a world-class film festival, a Jewish film festival and it's the biggest, actually by numbers internationally. So it's the biggest Jewish film festival in the world and America has 100 of them and, you know, it's a fantastic element in the, in public.
Sorry, here's a question from councillor D'Souza.
Sorry, Eddie, was it you that sang Hallelujah at the Jewish festival?
I believe, I believe that it was me and I know that I sang.
This was at Randwick, I'm sure it was you.
It was me and I apologised my very average singing.
No, you were great and you got us all involved and we sang Hallelujah and it was a wonderful opportunity to celebrate Jewish culture. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr Tamir. Thank you, Miss councillor D'Souza. We will now move on to the next item. Thank you. Okay. CS57/22, Heffernan Netball Court Shade Structure and Tiered Seeding, speaking in favour, Ms Jenny Morrissey.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and first of all, I'd like to thank Randwick Council for all the support that they've given to Randwick Netball Association for the 53 years of operation. This new incentive that's come about for Randwick Council, I think it's a huge win for women and all the girls that have been played netball at Heffernan Park, but it's also a huge win for the council of Randwick. The multi-purpose shade area that we're requesting that council support will not only allow our representative girls be able to train and fulfil their dreams of becoming diamonds, it'll also allow the council to have Sunday markets, multicultural evenings, food truck and everyone can come together underneath this area from courts one to six. Allowing us to have a shaded area down at Heffernan Park, it would just be like a dream come true for all the girls. We've never had a facility that's, will go anywhere near a first-class facility. Our aim at Randwick is to give every opportunity possible to all our girls and hopefully in the short future be able to hold the state championships in our local area. This structure will also be able to give us some shade and some protection down at the courts on a Saturday. If you haven't been to the courts on Saturday, there's actually 10,000 people that go through our courts every Saturday from April through to September. We don't have any shelter down there at all, so if there's a strong wind or rain, we all have to run for our cars. So this will also provide that opportunity for us and also all the women who keep your communities together have got all their children and siblings down there, so this area will also be able to enhance that for our members. We're really hoping that Randwick Council will support this project for us. Of course, we want it tomorrow, but if we have to stage it, we're really willing to help and support Randwick Council to obtain every possible grant and every donation or whatever we have to do to get this facility. Netball is never seen as a priority in any community and it is the biggest sport that's played by women and it is your biggest sport, whether it's female or male, in the municipality of Randwick. So I'm really strongly hoping that I get the good news and that Randwick will support the shade structure at Heffernan Park.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the speaker? Okay, there being no questions. There's a question from councillor Burst.
Firstly, thank you for coming and talking for the netball teams. What do you do when it rains? Do the girls still play?
No. We, well, if it sprinkles, yes, but if it rains, we can't. And then more importantly, it is actually the training in the preparation for our state championships. As you can imagine, in the last two months, we actually haven't had any training. It's been bucketing down and our girls actually haven't been able to play full seasons of netball due to COVID. So if, to have a facility like this would be just so awesome to be able to set a programme up, start them and get them ready for the state championships. As you'll notice in the documentation, we've actually had 11 diamonds come through Randwick and Marcia Elliott being the first Indigenous netballer and there's only two netballers Indigenous players for Australia. And at the moment, if you watch the Super League and you've got the Swifts and the Giants, we've actually got five girls who are actually in that, in those teams in the academy. So you've got some wonderful athletes coming through and to be able to actually set up a programme without any interruptions, I'm sure we can turn that 11 into 20 before you even think.
Thank you. So if you've got covered areas, you can continue to have games played every weekend and more training.
Hundred percent and training at night. But it'd also be used for the community at large. I mean, how many times you actually want to set up markets and you have to call them off because of the weather? You'll have this beautiful area down there that you can use that for, your food trucks in the summertime, it can be a really community hub area for the whole of the community to use. Of course, we're going to take ownership of it, but we're really happy to share it with the wider community.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza.
Hi, Ms Morrissey, thank you for being with us. Now tell me, it's a pretty simple question, I'm sure you have the answer, what has Randwick Council done for your group lately?
For what, sorry?
For your particular group, for netball, your sport. What have we done lately? What investment? I know when I was a mayor, we put in some AED equipment and everything in there, but recently, what comes to your mind that Randwick Council has done to help our netballers and your sport?
Thank you for asking the question. Randwick Council have been wonderful supporters for Randwick. In the last three years, you've actually put beautiful signage on our building so people actually know it's the Netball Centre. We've got the safety fence that divides the courts from the cycling, which is really a huge safety issue for our girls and it also upgrade the look of the park. We've had extra seating put in, we've had the modified courts, which allows all the children from the age of five up to 10 to play on lower courts, lower posts. So we actually have movable courts up and goalposts, which we move up and down for the first two time slots of every morning on a Saturday so that our little ones can play. And council are putting more modified posts into the top part of the section because obviously the babies or the five-year-olds to the tens, there is our future netballers and we want to make sure we offer the first-class facility for them. But more importantly, I think, sorry, that we're really grateful for, we are working towards to have the state championships at Randwick and there's not many councils that can offer that service, but we actually have 36 Ashfeld courts, which is what the minimum is to be able to hold the big dance and we're applied to New South Wales Netball to have the big dance at Randwick and this is all in preparation for this. And if we succeed, we want to actually have a big celebration on the Saturday night, which is the first that has ever happened at a state championships too, where we can bring the parents together when all the girls go home to get ready for the next day because the championships are held over three days. So Randwick Council, they're putting bubblets for us, they've extended the Ashfeld courts to bring them up to the requirements to have championships because you have to have a special runoff for them for the safety of the umpires. They've numbered the courts, there's not very many times that we asked Randwick to support our girls, that we've been really fortunate and we really, really thank all the councillors and the mayor for all the support that we get. We just really need this, we really do need this shaded area.
Thanks Jenny, thanks very much. Bit of a Dorothy Dix question, I knew the answer, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further questions, thank you very much, Jenny. Okay, we will now move to the next item, NM6/22, notice of motion from councillor Olive, record of ESBS regrowth in the Randwick Environment Park Hazard Reduction Burn Sites, speaking in favour, Mrs Jocelyn McGur.
Thank you, it's Ms... This is about the eastern suburbs Vanxia scrub, which I refer to as ESBS and it's in the Randwick Environment Park. Now, there's been a massive burn in December last and the motion of councillor Olive is to monitor the regrowth areas. I'm going to, I would add that the same monitoring of fauna and birds would be desirable, in fact, necessary. These two burnt areas, which you can see here, I don't think, the two areas are marked with a cross on the green map of the site, I don't think anybody feels comfortable looking at that or happy about it. It's very sad. The two burnt areas are each the size, each of them, of two-thirds of a football field. I'm going to pose the three questions now and the reasons for them will become obvious. Where are the Randwick Council forward plans for the eastern suburbs Vanxia scrub? When will an accurate map of the weed distribution on the site be produced? And when will a forward plan for eliminating the invasive weeds be produced? The ultimate effect of the complete removal of the ESBS in these huge areas is not predictable. As far as I know, no responsible authority manages ESBS in this way. At the same time as Randwick Council was making arrangements for this burn, it requested from the National Environment Protection Authority that the ESBS be upgraded from endangered to critically endangered on the national register. Hello, what's going on? The New South Wales scientific community estimates that the current rate of ESBS loss, it may be gone in three years. We've removed ours in three hours, the bulk of it. The interesting feature is that the burn area did not include the large areas of noxious invasive weeds. The noxious weeds are now the main vegetation in the Randwick Environment Park. They can be seen, for example, in deep strands all along the concrete path areas, but there is no accurate mapping of the But there is no accurate mapping of the weed distribution. How can you deal with it if you don't know where it is? The weeds are mainly bitu bush and lanthana. These are mentioned in the New South Wales Government Saving Our Species Report as the two most dangerous weed threats for the ESBS. And bitu bush is now on the national register of dangerous invasive species. In the same report, the RE, the Randwick Environment Park, is identified as a priority management area by the federal, by the state government. I don't think there's an appreciation of how important critically endangered is as a category. For example, koalas don't qualify. It is a very, very high category. And over the years...
I'd like to grant you a one-minute extension.
Over the years, the bird life has been reduced horribly. It's now down almost to Indian minor birds, and it used to be very rich. And the weed infestation is just horrible. We'll be able to conduct weed tours rather than native ESBS tours. It's a circular system, and it is just going down and down. And the burning of it is just a disaster. And the burn load, for example, is decided by the undergrowth, the grass and the dead things. Now, in the Centennial Park, they do spot burning. And that way, they avoid this sort of problem. And actually, they have offered, the Bushland Manager Supervisor has offered, Randwick Council access to seeds and to tube stock, which is very generous of them. They're prepared to help in a lot of ways.
Thank you very much, Mrs McGurk. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Councillor Olive.
Mr McGurk, for how many years have you had a close concern for the ecology of the Randwick Environment Park?
Since the early 90s, and Cathy Nielsen also was on a number of committees with me at that point, yes. I didn't live near the environment park at that stage, but when it came up with the Defence Department, I realised it was extremely important. The environmental assets were unique, and for that reason, I became interested. It is something which there isn't anything else of that status in this municipality.
Thank you. Councillor Hay.
Thank you for coming and talking. I was involved in one of the bush regeneration programs within Randwick Environment Park. You mentioned in detail the bitu bush and lanthana. The policy was to by hand remove maybe one or two metres worth, leave that on the ground, and that would create a habitat for animals. Can I ask, how bad is the weed infestation? And do we need a more rapid weed removal program for the sake of the eastern suburbs Vanxia scrub?
I'm not an expert in that area, but it's now reached a critical stage. Even on the diagram that was produced as a request for a map, there was a rough diagram produced. And over 50%, and this is before the burning of the two football fields, the diagram showed that the predominant vegetation was these massive invasive species. And I might add that they are prosecutable offences to allow these things to continue to grow. And they are lush. It's a disgrace. I hate to criticize, and I'd rather work with council and against them, but it's so sad.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just an apology, I believe I incorrectly stated your title. My apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now move to the next item, NM 19/22. Notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld, dog-friendly beach at the northern end of Frenchman's Beach. Speaking against, Mr Charles Abella.
Good evening, councillors. I'm speaking against the notion of allowing dogs on Frenchman's Beach. Now, you might ask, why aren't dogs allowed on Maruba Beach, on Clove Valley, on Coogee? And the answer is quite simple, because there's general community opposition to having dogs on beaches. And why don't we have dog-free, leash-free areas on those beaches? Because it's been council policy to follow community wishes over the years. Now, those community wishes haven't changed one bit. The reasons the community don't like dogs on beaches are quite simple. Dogs poo, which sometimes is not picked up. Dogs also whittle. They are threatening to small children. Now, there is another special reason why the northern end of Frenchman's Beach shouldn't be considered. And that is that section of beach is contiguous with the lands owned by the Aboriginal community. And we've had in the past, this is not a new issue, we've had it in the Pacing Committee a couple of times. And every time it's been discussed at the Pacing Committee, there's been outrage from women from the Aboriginal community in fear of their children going down there in a dog area. So I really think it's really a waste of time to carry on with this motion. I think it should be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Abella. Are there any questions for the speaker? Okay, there being no questions. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to NM 21/22. Notice of motion from councillor Veach, impact of bus cuts and privatisation. Speaking in favour, Mr Ari Merton.
I'd just like to begin with an acknowledgement of country, that we're gathered here on the Bidigal and Gadigal land. I acknowledge their connection to land, water, and I acknowledge their continued connection to this. I'm here to speak in favour of the motion raised by councillor Veach to call on the state government to retain public ownership and to reinstate or modify and cancelled bus routes. I'm here to express my frustration, on behalf of myself and numerous people within my community, that these cuts and changes to the bus routes have caused. It's caused quite an inconvenience, as now there is required to be numerous bus changes, wherein past it's been simply one bus. For people who might not have access to a car, this can complicate travel times immensely, as I know it has for some people. For example, travelling from where I live in Kensington used to require one simple bus, but now requires at least two buses, or a long walk, or a roundabout train trip. For some of my friends travelling to university, it can become reasonably cumbersome to organise their travel into the university. I have full support for the motion put forward by councillor Veach, and I believe that bus privatisation should be reversed, as well as looking into more sustainable local transport options, which not only would assist people within our community, but also encourage more environmentally friendly action.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Councillor Veach.
Thank you. Thanks very much for coming in to speak. I know you study at university. Do your friends and so on, are any of them using cars to get to university, to get to work, to socialise? Or would you say, you know, you're largely dependent on public transport?
I would say that probably the majority of us are dependent on public transport, especially with gas prices rising, as we mentioned earlier. And so, yes, I'd say that a large majority, to get around, to get into the city, to get across all of Sydney, a lot of them use public transport, including myself, a fair amount.
And what has been the main issue? Because I know there was a particular route that you were using. That's the reason you got in touch, was because of the particular changes of the main route you were using?
So I was travelling on the 348, which used to travel through, past my house in Kensington onwards to Bondi Junction. However, now it terminates at the hospital in Randwick Junction. And so it's complicated. As I mentioned, there's needed to be various different routes now that I have to take instead of that. And that's to travel to visit friends, to go shopping for various different other things too.
Councillor Chapel.
Sorry, just very briefly, just interested in hearing if the tram is useful for any of you?
Personally, I do like the light rail because it's very good to get into the city. It's a bit of a far walk from my house, but, you know, I'll cope. But yeah, no, so the light rail has been useful in that aspect, certainly.
Thank you, Mr Merton. I'll now move to the next motion, NM 23. Notice of motion from councillor Veach. Motion for the 2022 National General Assembly of Local Government addressing the impacts of anthropogenic global warming. Speaking in favour, Mr Alan Griffin.
Thank you, councillors. It's the first time I've been here. Basically, I just want to talk about, over the years, I've actually, I actually live in Gunnera. I used to live in Gunnera, and now I live in Sydney. But over the years, I've travelled back and forwards to the country areas. And as I've been driving through, I've got, there's a little town that I grew up in, a little place called Brisa. And then my father bought a house in Gunnera. But basically, the water, the rivers around Gunnera, especially the Mookai, has actually, sometimes has actually run dry. And we've actually basically lost our animals, our goannas, our fish. But also, the drought has actually devastated the town in Gunnera and around the areas as well. But the thing that we're trying to do is actually give something, you know, the water and that is mostly the main thing that we want to keep the rivers alive, if we can. Because if we don't keep those rivers alive, and especially out in the dry areas, we're going to lose everything we want, and especially the animals that we want to keep. The koalas, actually, over the years, with the drought and everything, Gunnera has actually one of the biggest koala areas in New South Wales, maybe in Australia. But anyway, they've actually died, some of them have actually died in the paddocks because there was no water around the areas. The floods were, you know, now that the floods have came back, you know, some of the animals have come back. But over the years, in Gunnera, I seem to think that we've lost our way because if we don't look after the climate change and everything like this, we're going to lose everything. And as an Aboriginal man, you people believe in climate change, but we don't. We believe that Mother Earth has come and letting us know that she's not happy with us. And if we don't start looking after everything around, not only here in Australia, we're going to make sure that everything that we've got, we're going to lose all this. Because the most important thing is, the animals are our most important part of our lives. And if we don't look after these animals, we're going to have a really bad time. But also, the people of Aboriginal people up there, we seem to think that we're losing our way. We're losing the things that we want to keep. You know, we want to keep our land to look after it. Now, if we look after our land, we're going to have everyone, you know, not just Aboriginal people...
Mr Griffin, you have one more minute.
But, you know, just white people will come and join our life. You know, this is the most important thing. If we lose all this, we're going to, we're actually, well, I won't say it, but we're not going to have anything to look at for the future of our kids. Our kids are going to be our most important part of our life. You know, so that's what I'm looking, I want the councillors to have a good look at themselves because it is the most important part of our life, is the land that we walk on is the land that we want to look after. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you very much. There being no questions. Thank you very much, Mr Robinson, sorry, Mr Griffin. I now call the next speaker. Notice of motion from councillor Chapel, synthetic turf at Coral Sea Park postponement. Speaking against, Mr Ian Robinson.
Apologies for the time I've been coaching. Thanks for allowing Maruba to put their case forward. We represent the main hire of Coral Sea Park. Last year, we had 1,300 players of great diversity, aging from five to 70. And 35% of our players are female. We're a community volunteer-based club. 80% of our players are local residents and therefore ratepayers and voters in the Randwick LGA. Football is second most popular activity among children, according to a survey conducted by Randwick Open Space and Recreational Needs. And seventh most popular among adults, behind walking, swimming, gym and cycling, which are largely individual pursuits. It is the highest participation organised sport in the eastern suburbs and head of AFL rugby and league combined. We welcome the opportunity to talk about the synthetic field at Coral Sea Park. Fee availability and good playing services is a pertinent issue for the club. With so many members, the park can suffer from overuse. Recent weather means our season this year has already been curtailed. We're about to start season 22. We only have two of our three full-size fields available due to the impact of the stormwater drains with the recent rain. And one field has created seven sinkholes and is yet to be repaired by council before the season starts. With the extreme weather events, one could argue synthetics are the most sustainable sporting surfaces. The proposed synthetic field would at least provide some greater certainty of field availability and utilisation than existing fields. It would ensure availability across all future weather patterns. We think some of the issues raised by reflecting a sweeping view of synthetic fields, as each is a separate case. For instance, the proposed location for Coral Sea Park synthetic is in shade as it is close to the trees on the western side of the field, providing shade at the hottest times of the day. The space it would occupy is almost 20% less of the total space of Coral Sea Park, which is a park we share with the public and their dogs, who like to dig up the turf and leave us with potholes all over the field. For the added enjoyment of the 68,000 fee we pay for the hire of the park gives us, we also have the pleasure of picking up the residue and filling in the holes they leave behind. Few of the dog owners bother to do it. We care about the state of the park to ensure all our players have a safe surface to play on. Whilst we appreciate the issues around synthetic pitches, we feel they provide the best solution for the need for local clubs like ours to provide consistent, year-round community sport. Our main issue will be the increased cost of hire. We already spend 68,000 for only six months of hire for three pitches. Current fees for Heffron synthetic will most likely lead to fees of around 80,000. We believe that affects our philosophy of providing affordable sport for all our community.
Thank you very much. There's a question from councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Ian. Ian, let me ask you the same question as Jenny Morrissey. What has council done for you and your group lately?
Oh, quite a lot. We've got new amenities. We've fixed our amenities. We've been there since 19, it's our 60th year today, so we've been at Coral Sea Park for 60 years. So, and last year, they put new lights up, restored the lights. They've also done all the amenity blocks. We finished it three February, about 10 years ago. And we're pleased about the location and the effort they put into creating a field in a place that allows all our players without upsetting the cricket that uses a central thing in the summer.
Councillor D'Souza.
Thanks, Ian. So this particular investment by council and community, that'll make a big difference, won't it? I know when I was the mayor, I built the first synthetic park at Heffron Park. And it did make a big difference because it's all-year training. The question is, how, what, will it make a big difference to you in all-weather training, that kind of stuff?
Oh, I mean, in some senses, yes. I mean, it will give us all-year-round sport. I mean, one of the reasons why we don't offer all-year-round football is because the cricket have the cricket pitch there.
have the cricket pitch there. And council, Randwick council don't allow use of fields around cricket pitches. So, it will provide us all-round sport and consistent usage of the fields. I mean, we, in certain climate times, we can say fifty percent of our, thirty percent of our time training is gone because of the, the fields get flooded quite easily.
Thank you. I have a question from councillor Veach. Councillor Pandefini, then councillor Veach, then councillor Chapel. Councillor Pandefini. Okay.
Ian, thanks for coming to talk. You've, you mentioned the issue with pets. Do you think that council, with pets and dingh holes and, do you think that council can do more to prevent that? Is it just an answer of, you know, having synthetic turf as opposed to doing more to...
No, I just think council have an issue with allowing, the main, I would say, the, the council's ability to be down there when all the dog owners are there is really difficult. And, and dog owners in the last two years have had, because we've been so disrupted by Covid, have had, seemed to have seen free rein. But we're perpetually having to tell dog owners to not, that we hire the field. And I understand council have a, a lot of dog owners in Randwick, but as far as like young kids and the safety of the pitches, the pitches are really struggle with the dogs digging up things. We can't be policed all year round, all, all, all time, all time. So maybe, it has been proposed sometimes that we have a cat, a dog pack, a dog area.
That sounds good, yeah.
Different subject.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. The other thing you mentioned were the weather events. I think one of the most striking images recently for me, from the major weather event from climate change with the rains and the flooding, was that, that image of the synthetic turf field that had, the council had, I can't actually remember which council it was, but they'd spent about one point five million on this field and it was completely annihilated.
Yeah, so, yeah. No, I mean, obviously, there's, I mean, I won't presume that that would, the, the current design is raised and has better drainage. But I mean, at the moment, if you go down to Coral Sea Park, you've got seven sinkholes that could easily have, if we'd have had our little kids on there, could easily have resulted in quite a lot of damage to kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Veach.
Thanks for coming in. Both my sons used to play for Maruba United, so they've got their foundation skills, they still play soccer, football. So I know how much work the, all the, you know, coaches and parents and so on put in at the club. It's a fantastic club. I'm sure you're probably aware that, you know, the New South Wales government is preparing a, is currently reviewing the safety of synthetic fields and that that review is being conducted by the chief scientist. I guess my question to you would be, if the chief scientist were to come forward and say that they do not consider synthetic turf to be safe for children, what, what would you do then? I mean.
Obviously, within the club, we're not all pro-synthetic. I mean, there's, there's a wide range of views about what the best way to provide a great surface for Coral Sea Park is. I mean, if we could re-turf all our Coral Sea Park and put fences around like they have done for the rugby at Pioneer Park and had all the water, if you spent ten million on, on Coral Sea Park in that sense, then we would have three quality grass pitches and turf pitches that would last us for as long as Coral, as synthetic. But that is not the case. I mean, we, we, we're, we're looking after thirteen hundred footballers and at the moment, they're not, we can't provide guaranteed sport for, for them all, all the time with the current surfaces. And similarly, as a dog park, really, as a shed environment, it's really difficult to keep surfaces that are safe for our players. Whereas with a synthetic, they don't. And then synthetics are all around the world and, and there are probably, and we've yet to really understand what the, the synthetic field that is being put down with, it's five G or four G or whatever level it is at. But if, in our view, synthetic is a, the best way that we can provide quality sport for our many, many different edges of football.
Yes, a follow-up question, councillor Veach.
A short follow-up question. So, thank you. So just given that the report from the chief scientist hasn't been brought down yet and we don't know, and I as a councillor do have concerns because we are committing a considerable amount of money and there are children playing, many children who play on that field. But you did mention that if council were to consider an amended turf field, you know, one of those very high-quality turf fields such as we see, for example, that's probably being proposed, for example, for the showcase NRL field, would that be something that you would consider and perhaps fencing to keep dogs out?
Well, the problem with that is it wouldn't really give us all-year-round football because the turf, unless it's redesigned, but perhaps, yeah. I mean, but in, in a similar sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, in a, in, in a similar sense. The, the, you've just, the councillor's still building an all-weather pitch for rugby, rugby league in, in Heffron, so that's still going ahead. And they've just completed a rugby league, one down in Pen Reserve.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Thanks for coming along, Mr. Robinson. Just.
Sorry, councillor Chapel, councillor De Souza has a point of order, so I will hear the point of order.
Mr. Mayor, that line of questioning, I think, needed a little bit of guidance from you. The councillors, councillors are aware of the precautionary principle, and if the precautionary principle tells us that danger, if there is danger, we don't go ahead with it. Now, the councillor should be aware of it and not bring it to the attention of poor Mr. or Ian, who is here to educate us and tell us why we should build it. Not, not, that line of questioning is totally out of order.
Thank, thank you very much, councillor De Souza. It's now over. I'll return to councillor Chapel. Councillor Chapel.
Thank you. Thanks again for coming, Mr. Robinson, really appreciate it. As I have daughter at Maruba United and love the club. I would be interested in knowing what the weekly winter usage of the fields by the club is and what proportion of the fields that takes up. So how many hours are we playing there currently and training? And I'd also be interested in hearing, you talked about the shading by the trees, how much of the field, there's an estimate of that covering, because I didn't see that in any of the materials we've got to date. It's okay if you don't know that part.
How much is used? Well, we, we hire the fields from three nights a week and then all the weekends, but weekends, so, so six hours, so nine hours in three times, about twenty-five hours a week. But I mean, the fields are not just used by us, they're used by Marsling Sports School and other schools. So it's not just a football team that uses Coral Sea Park. So, yeah, three nights a week plus weekends. But the, 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 the footballing space it will get when with the all-weather won't change that much. Won't be increased anyway, that's for sure.
Thank you, councillor Sid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick ones. I realise you mentioned you had issues around the cricket pitch, so you couldn't get to play the fields. If you had the synthetic, does that mean you could actually use the synthetic to start training at an earlier time than what you do now?
Oh, we can, we can train already around.
And do your selections and all that.
Sorry, we, we can train there. It's not going to change our time of training because cricket isn't, it's two different sports. What it does do is allow us to provide all-year-round football. Because at the moment, we, we, we finish in end of August and then we start again in February and March. So having an all-year-round available pitch would allow us to, well, I mean, in a sense, we're going in partnership with the Eastern Suburbs Football Association and provide quality or, well, affordable sport for most of our community, which is, what tends to happen in the summer is it gets taken over by, the all-weather pitches get taken over by private companies, which is.
Which actually is going to be my next question. My ears picked up when you mentioned fees and charges. Have you discussed those fees and charges? Are we building it?
Do you want, how, how long do you want me to go into it now? But no, no, not, with, with, that's been, always been a pertinent issue with the club.
Because the, so do you take it as I took it that the, was the ground actually exclusively for you guys or is it?
Pardon?
Sorry.
Is the ground exclusively for you guys?
Yeah, yeah, we, we exclusively hire in the winter.
No, I mean the actual synthetic, when the synthetic is.
I, I, I've no idea what, what Randwick's proposals are for the hire of the pitch. I presume we'll just have to similarly put in our bid at the beginning of January and then we'll, one would presume that our current status would not change.
So I'll bring it up in the debate because there's an opportunity that you might even get the pitch if you don't pay the fees.
Uh, if, if, say that again, sorry, Daniel.
So councillor, it might be best directed through the relevant officer in the debate rather than Mr. Robertson. Thank you. There being no further questions. Thank you very much. If it's a brief question, that's fine.
Thank you for coming in. I was also a coach at Maruba Soccer.
I remember, Bill.
Thank you. I'd like to remind Mr. Bruce a question.
There is a question at the end of this.
Yes.
I remember back in the early, in the late nineties when, when girls first started coming to play soccer at Maruba and participation rate was probably below two percent. So having thirty-five percent of girls now playing soccer at Maruba is fantastic. My question is, with an AstroTurf field, do you believe that you'll be able to play more games or less games would be called off with inclement weather if you've got an AstroTurf field available?
Oh, of course we'll be able to play more games. I mean, we, when, when it rains in Coral Sea Park, grounds get closed. I mean, we work in tandem with the council and council will keep them open sometimes because, but then with the, as the storms come through, we close them. We're, we're very aware of making sure that our pitches stay for as long, playable as long as possible. But soon as it rains, if we're going to have rain this weekend and we've got, we've had the field this weekend, it will be closed on Saturday and we won't be playing.
Thank you, Ian, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. Thank you very much. There being no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, cool. Ms. Bronwyn Hannah, to address the meeting, I just have for the benefit of the meeting a minor, non-significant, non-procurnary interest. Ms. Hannah and I actually for a period of time shared an employer. I will be voting on the matter. Councillors, can I just very briefly say, unless you have a genuine belief that asking the question will assist the meeting in coming to a decision, I just ask that you be conscious of time. All yours.
Thank you, your worship. It's lovely to see you here. And councillors, thank you for having me. And thank you Deputy Mayor for inviting me tonight and for being interested in evidence-based public policy, which is clear in your motion. I'm part of the Natural Turf Alliance, which is a group of about eighteen community groups from around Sydney, and we're all basically opposing synthetic fields in our local community. I didn't start that way. I became involved because I run two bush care groups in my local area in Keringai, and I was told that we were getting a synthetic field upstream, which is surrounded by critically endangered plant community. I didn't think twice about it. My son and both my daughters play at the, at the soccer club and the field is an absolute nightmare. It's, the soccer is so frustratingly called off all the time and I, so I thought, well, this can't be too bad. I did decide to look at, I did start doing some research into it, however, and I was told that we were getting an environmentally friendly cork field, just like a one at Ride at ELS Hall. So I went and had a look at it and I was very interested in the waterway because Quarry Creek, where my bush care site is, is just downstream from where this, this field will be. I went to ELS Hall and I looked at the drainage and there was an open grate which was complete, had been forced open and there was collagulated brown sludge cork flowing into the creek. And at that point, I became alarmed and I continue to be very, very alarmed about synthetic fields, particularly their impact on the environment. And that's why the chief scientist is now looking at it and there is a lot of emerging research about the environmental impacts. And I would say to you, and this seems like a big statement, but if you're worried about incinerators in your area and environmental impacts, I'd be looking very carefully at the environmental impacts of synthetic fields, particularly the, some of the evidence about impacts on fields around Sydney, Blackman's Park, mangrove death there, very serious impacts on Duffy's Forest in North Harbour Recreation Area, a lot of information about microplastic migration, and I understand that your runoff would go into Maruba Beach. And I would say to you, given some of the research by Dr. Scott Wilson, that it is very, very hard to mitigate my, this microplastics, particularly the grass that goes into the stormwater. In terms of usage, I just want to say that I think that the idea that we need synthetic is based on fiction in Australia, in our, in our environment. I think there's new generation natural turf fields that can provide fifty-five hours a week for soccer clubs. And I, my kids are soccer players and they prefer playing on grass, but they don't want to play on a bad grass field. So these new generation modern turf fields can do, do what you need. A recent study by soil signers, Dr. Mick Badham, showed that, he looked at a thousand ovals, including in your LGA, and found that ninety-nine percent of ovals in Sydney were used for less than forty-six hours a week. So a good quality, natural turf field with proper soil science, the right drainage, the right turf cultivar can do what you need for your soccer clubs. And I don't think there should be like a soccer versed environment or anything like that. I think it's about, in a, in the age of climate change, we need multi-purpose green spaces where everybody can share and that don't have impacts on our environment and that bring our communities together. The other fiction of this all-weather three sixty-five days a year, Dr. Sebastian Fauch, who is at Western Sydney University, who's doing some brilliant research about livable cities and the problem that we're going to have sections of our city that will be unlivable because of the impacts of extreme weather and climate change, is really concerned about synthetic fields and said they are completely wrong for our climate. He measured at Bayside Park, in Bayside, a, on a twenty-eight degree day, the field temperature was eighty-eight degrees. Now, I don't want my kids playing on that, that is just dangerous and that really limits your usage. So this idea that this is three sixty-five days a year, you cannot play on these fields and you do not want your children on these fields in the middle of summer. That is a real issue. The other issue is the limit to passive recreation of these fields. They are closed off and really used by sporting groups, but you can't use them, you can't, if you look at a sign for these fields, you can't drink on them, you can't eat on them, you can't picnic on them, you can't dog walk on them. So if you want to, and granted, you can always close off this bit of the field with a natural turf field if you've got issues with dogs. But in an increasingly urbanised city, and we've heard today about these housing targets, you need to have open green space that is not limiting to any of your populations. It has to be used by the whole communities. That's what our future requires us to do. In terms of costs, these ovals are three times, that's, sorry, that's a heat, these heat island map of a local island, a, a, a local field near me. In terms of lives, the cost, you can see here, this is from a peer-reviewed journal article on costs, they cost three times as much. So if you have a shortage of oval, you are much better off spending your money on installing good quality, well-maintained, and this is what council needs to do, maintain them properly, good quality, natural turf, modern, new generation turf fields, that is much better bang for your bucks. Chryma Oval has just had to be, it was a synthetic field, it just has to be replaced at one point two-three million, and that's after nine years. So the idea that these ovals last forever is another fiction. And my final fiction really is the environmental, that the fact that these can be environmentally friendly, there are serious issues with these ovals. I've mentioned the heat and the heat island effect in the, in an age of climate change, which is crazy. The excess water, there's evidence of mangrove death, as I've told you, tree death around these ovals, and the microplastics issues. And that, that oval in Brisbane is a, is really a, a real concern, is the Mitchelton Oval. I've got it here. And after the last flood event, this is another oval in Kellyville that some of our members live near. And you can see the, the migration of the field into the waterways. So that is quite a concern.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Chapel, Ms. Hannah, would you be all right to answer a question from councillor Chapel?
Definitely.
Sorry, thanks for coming, Ms. Hannah. Just one very brief question. I know you're familiar with a large number of these fields around New South Wales. I think this is the first one in our local area that's. I think this is the first one in our local area that's very close to residential homes. I was wondering if you could tell me about the kind of amenity impacts it has on local residents?
Well, I think the heat is an issue and also the lighting at night as well and a smell is a massive issue, like a lot of communities that, I mean, I think a lot of councils are actually moving away from putting these fields near any residential because actually it brings down the price of houses, but the smell is really bad and that's a concern. I know at Charles Bean at Linfield, the oval there, that the local school actually doesn't want to have there anymore because they can't use it. There's a whole lot of units around that and our council's getting a lot of, you know, complaints about smell and heat.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, there being no further speakers or questions, we will now move into the debate on the items for which we have had public speakers. Before I do that, just for the benefit of those who are staying for the public meeting, we will go through the items in the order where there were speakers on. So we will start on the items which we began with, so it may take some time if you are waiting for the later items. Just one second. Okay, I move to the first item, CP 11/22, Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal, Heritage Conservation, do I have a mover? Moved councillor Hamilton, oh my God, you're going to murder me. Moved councillor Nielsen.
I'm not standing up.
Moved councillor Nielsen, my apologies.
I'm moving it in a slightly amended way. Everything remains the same except that point B becomes, oh, sorry, where did I write it down? I forgot it was going to be first one up, I apologise. Point B becomes amended draft Comprehensive Planning Proposal to be placed on public exhibition to remove the following property. So instead of properties, it just becomes property, P R O P E R T Y from part one. And so the property to be removed is 51 Doncaster Avenue, Kensington. So 21 Baden Street remains.
Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Chapel. Councillor Nielsen, would you now like to speak to it?
I don't think I need to speak to it other than let's put it out in this way and yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Chapel is the seconder.
She's up my right.
Okay, are there any further speakers? There you go. There being no further speakers, councillor Nielsen, no? Okay, all those in, because this is a planning matter, I will go around the horseshoe and we'll have a division.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, do you want to speak?
Please, for one second, I want to ask a question about Marsell Avenue.
Look, I will indulge it, but I will indulge it, but we will be very, I'd ask-
It'd be a very quick question. If it's the effects of, if we take notice of what Mr Catsterios said, that he's willing to supply engineering reports, he's willing to supply heritage reports, and then, so if you could stay off until he supplies all those to council, is that appropriate to the director?
Mr Kuriaku.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The recommendation on the business paper is really just to commence the process by which to list the item and that requires the advice of the Randwick Local Planning Panel. So the owner of 11A Marsell Avenue will have the opportunity to present documentation to that panel as well as council.
Thank you, Mr Kuriaku. That's all I wanted, to have an opportunity to present his argument. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Nielsen, close the debate, no further thing. Okay, we'll now go to a division. Councillor Pandefini.
Four.
Councillor Nielsen.
Four.
Councillor Veach.
Four.
Councillor Hayes left the room. Councillor Luxford.
Four.
Councillor Chapel.
Four.
Councillor Rosenfield.
Four.
Councillor Olive.
Four.
Councillor McCafferty.
Four.
Councillor Wilson.
Four.
Councillor Sed.
Four.
Councillor Burst.
Four.
Councillor D'Souza. Councillor D'Souza.
His microphone was on. Four.
Thank you. And the mayor is four. I declare that unanimous. Okay, thank you. We now move to the next item, CP 15/22, Protection of the Environment, Operations, General Amendment, Thermal Energy from Waste Regulation, council submission, do I have a mover? Moved councillor Burst, seconded by councillor Sed. Councillor Burst, could you just clarify for the meeting what it is that you're moving?
I'm moving a business paper, CP 15-22.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to speak to it?
Reserve the right to maybe speak later.
Thank you. Councillor Sed.
I will speak to it, Mr Mayor. Why I'm speaking to it is that I actually need to ask a question first through you to the Director of Planning. If this is amended in any way, especially if it's amended in the way that Mr Hanson has asked, will it hamper the whole, will it have any significant issues to our cause?
Mr Kuriaku.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That is a hypothetical question that's been put to me. I'll answer it in this way. The draft regulations rely on the EPA's Energy from Waste Policy Statement and that does articulate the provision for these types of facilities in particular locations that they deem suitable and have the lesser impact on communities that are in proximity. So the regulations in effect are establishing the framework for that to occur and the key to that is the requirements around facilities being within the Greater Sydney Region and those are the requirements, as you can see from the submission, which are relating to the fuel source that is being replaced. The submission by council is really in response to that general framework and policy statement. If council was to suggest that they should not be located anywhere in New South Wales, that is a significant departure from the regulations and the policy statement.
Thank you.
So, Mr Mayor, just speaking on that and in line with what the director has just told us, when I started this campaign three years ago with the President of the Matreville Precinct and also the Secretary of the Matreville Precinct, at a packed meeting of about 300 people, which I couldn't attend, we were at a conference, but subsequently at every Matreville precinct, we've had about 80 people at those meetings and online meetings, we've had up to 100 people. And they have given it to me, the authority to say that as a precinct, we just want this not to be built and anything that hampers that build will be detrimental to the whole effects of the people of Matreville. We've taken our hits from all over these years, especially we've had two oil refineries, we had brickworks, we had sewage go into Malabar, we have, we also have ICI that's polluted the aquifers and just next door to the paper mills is Persaw Park, which we spent, councillor had to spend $2 million on to build irrigation so that we could water the water because the bores there are completely polluted from ICI. So Matreville has done its fair share. This is our campaign that we just don't want this built. If anything at all is detriment to that being happening, then I'll have to hang my head in shame that I couldn't stop it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor D'Souza, then councillor Veach and then councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, the people of Matreville have spoken, not just the people of Matreville, but the community as a whole has spoken and they've made it clear that once it's burned, it's gone. And Mr Hanson talks about a circular economy. That's exactly what we're talking about, recycling, reusing, linear economies, you burn the waste. Now, former Mayor Sed championed it and it was rewarded by a strong vote at the local government elections. The fact is that the council too supported it. So I would like to ask a question, Mr Mayor, to the relevant officer, because Mr Hanson came here and he said, by doing what we're doing or putting forward that so-called amendment, would it underpin what we're putting forward in our submission? Could I ask that question to the relevant officer, please, Mr Mayor?
Mr Kuriaku.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think I've answered that as best as possible in the previous answer that I gave.
I think you did, but my, part two of my submission would be then, would it cost or would it not be prudent to add that amendment because it would be a further safety valve and protection for our community? Is it that hard to add it to the submission we're presenting? And then I'll just sit down.
Mr Kuriaku.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That's really a matter for council. The officers have provided their advice in the draft submission.
Thank you. Councillor Veach.
Thank you. I would like to move an amendment, which I've sent through to Mr Kelly.
Thank you. Do you have a seconder for that amendment? Seconded by councillor Chapel, councillor Veach.
And this is, thank you, Mr Mayor, this is the amendment that was circulated to the councillors by Mr Hanson late this afternoon. And I would have been very happy for one of the other councillors, councillor D'Souza, if you were, if you're interested in moving this, I'd be more than happy to sit down if you wanted to move it and I'd be happy to second it. It's just verbatim as was- Thank you, councillor. Councillors, Chris Hanson from No Matreville Incinerators, formerly No, just No More Incinerators, spoke at tonight's meeting. He's been at a lot of meetings over the last year or more. He's, you know, one of, you know, our strongest community advocates. I'm not in the Matreville precinct, but there have been invitations extended to other councillors on certain occasions when this issue is being discussed and so I have attended two or three times to hear, to learn more about this issue. I can't really, with all due respect to the councillors here, Mr Hanson does have really considerable expertise on this issue. He has shared his knowledge with the councillors, with anyone who's interested and, you know, I wasn't able to attend the meeting yesterday, the rally yesterday because it was on a Monday afternoon, but, you know, I know all the councillors here have been very, very supportive and it's been a wonderful example of where council and community and actually councillors of all political persuasions have really been of the same view. Mr Hanson has really put a lot of detailed thought into assessing the regulation. I don't believe there's any form of council resolution that commits us to supporting incinerators in other precincts at all. And in fact, I think there is a danger there. There is a danger there. I have consulted with Chris. I believe that these incinerators are not supported by those other communities such as in Lithgow or the Southern Highlands. They don't want them either. So I don't really think it's appropriate for us to be standing up saying we don't want it here, but we're happy for them to go somewhere else because it is going to completely disrupt the push towards a circular economy. As councillor D'Souza said, we've had great success with FOGO. The community has gotten right behind it. There were people who weren't, you know, so sure, but actually they've come to the party and they love it. And once the money's going into these incinerators, they need a fuel source, they need a waste stream. So there's no, there's every chance they could end up back here in the future. Gas prices, hopefully we'll get off gas, but gas prices are going through the roof, as everyone knows, going through the roof. If they continue to rise, there will be pressure coming back on us to build this incinerator. We cannot rule that out. We cannot rule that out. So I would really encourage councillors to support the amendment. This is entirely worded by Chris and as we've all been working with him so closely, I'd urge you to support this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Chapel.
She's up my right.
Thank you. Okay, are there any further speakers on the amendment? Councillor Burst.
I'd like to speak against the amendment. I was elected by the people of Southwood, I was elected by the people of Randwick. This is a fight that's been going for three years and we need to safeguard Matreville and safeguard Randwick. If we do anything that weakens our motion, I think it's a detriment to the people of our ward and of our Randwick city. So I'm sorry, I can't support the amendments. I think we need to, at some point, you need to stand up for our people, the people of Matreville. It would be doing a disservice to actually weaken our motion. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Chapel and then councillor Olive.
Sorry, just to respond to that, I believe it actually strengthens the motion to say not here, not anywhere, because it shows just the scope of the issue that we're confronting. So I think commend the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Olive.
Yes, I just wanted to support councillor Chapel in that, you know, the circular economy doesn't end in Randwick. I mean, if we're going to mount some sort of campaign for a circular economy and also to argue that we should not have a waste-to-energy incinerator, we can't very well advocate it elsewhere. That just weakens the case.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor D'Souza on the amendment.
Yes, Mr Mayor. I support councillor Veach. I think it's because we can't say not in my backyard, mate. This, I had to look up what anthogenic meant, anthogenic, and it means an impact of anthogenic global warming and it's about humans causing problems. I mean, it's a fancy way of saying it. So this incinerator is a problem. We talk about the circular economy. I respect councillor Veach for putting, Chris asked me to put it forward, I said, mate, I don't have the numbers, in saying that I could see the value in what you're doing. And councillor Veach was strong and courageous enough to put it forward and she's doing it for the right reasons. It's not about politics here, it's about people. So I hope you all support councillor Veach and councillor Chapel on this one.
Thank you. There being councillor Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Much as I agree with the sentiment that's expressed in the amendment proposed here, I think that we have to be very specific in responding to the draft energy waste amendment regulation that's been put forward and I think that we have to take on board what the officers have said in their submission and I think that we run a risk of perhaps diverting ourselves from the main focus in hand here. I totally agree with all the sentiments that are reflected in the amendment. I don't have a problem with that at all, but I think we should stick with the submission that has been drawn up by our officers. So I oppose the amendment.
Thank you. You're going to speak against the amendment. Okay, councillor Sed.
Mr Mayor, unfortunately, I think new councillors and a few people have lost track here that, and sadly even councillor D'Souza, but thank you for your comments before. We started this because there was going to be built a 13-storey building, the size of Southwood and Hillsdale, was going to be built in people's backyards. People are in tears, people are suffering, people have gone through, as I said before, we have gone through a lot, as a lifelong person who's lived in Matreville, we want to go forward. As a lifelong person who's lived in Matreville, we want to go forwards. We started this campaign to stop it at Matreville, and that's what it was all about. For three years, the council has done a campaign to stop this being built. And unfortunately, it could all be derailed. And I'm not agreeing to them being built anywhere else, but I'm happy to fight that fight with those other people once we get ours stopped. So our main role, as councillor Burst has said, we use that as a platform to the people we know, the people that we know and love, the people that we're family, the people that are friends. And we have promised that we will fight this. And as I said before, we will not let anything get in the way. And we're doing this on behalf of all the people that have worked at places like ICI and have probably died of cancer in the meantime. So I will not end this fight.
Thank you. There being, you don't close the debate on an amendment. So I will now put the amendment. All those in favour? All those against? Okay, there's a call for a division. Okay, councillor Pandefini.
For.
Councillor Nielsen.
Against.
Councillor Veitch.
For.
Councillor Hay.
Against.
Councillor Luxford.
Against.
Councillor Chapel. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Against.
Councillor Olive.
For.
Councillor McCafferty.
Against.
Councillor Wilson.
Against.
Councillor Sed.
Against.
Councillor Burst.
Against.
Councillor D'Souza.
For.
Thank you. And the mayor is against. I declare that lost. We now return to debate on the motion. If there's no further speakers on the motion, I'll now call councillor Burst to close the debate.
The only thing I really want to say is, we have the opportunity to set the precedent for the rest of the state to follow. Once we've set a precedent, they can always argue that precedent in future battles. But sometimes you can't win a war in one go. You've got to win a battle at a time. Now, Matreville is the battleground. Let's win Matreville, win Randwick City Council, and then we can help fight these other areas. But you need to win the one battle first. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you, councillors. We now move to the next item, CP16/22, induction of Leah Purcell into the Australian Film Walk of Fame at the spot Randwick. Do I have a mover? Moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded by councillor D'Souza. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Yes, I'd like to move this because I believe it's a fitting demonstration of Leah Purcell and, oh, sorry, and also great work by Eddie Tamir in the cinema, having that, those recognitions of all those different actors and actresses.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza.
I just say hallelujah, Mr Mayor. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further speakers. I take it there's no need to close the debate. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, thank you. CS57/22, Heffron Netball Court Shade Structure and Tiered Seating. Do I have a mover? Moved councillor Sed and seconded by councillor D'Souza. Councillor Sed, can you please clarify what you're moving?
As per recommendation in the business papers, to me.
Okay, thank you. Councillor D'Souza is the seconder. Or councillor Sed, did you need to speak to it or are you happy to?
I'd just like to say that I'm quite proud that I actually moved this in October last year, Mr Mayor, that my motion has come to the fore. And I just hope, in the interests of women's sport which I've campaigned for over the last four years, that we build the toilets at the Netball Courts as well. And I look at the director of city planning as well. So hopefully my motion on that four years ago, that we build the toilets to go with this, comes to the fore. And congratulations to Jenny and hopefully have a good season.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza is the seconder.
Yes, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I want to congratulate the general manager on the team because I asked a very simple question to Jenny. And how came this litany of wonderful things councillors done to build that sense of community we're so proud of? Now, I also, when I congratulate councillor Sed, if he does what he said he did, and good on him. But when I did work with the Salvation Army, I was the zone chairman at collections at Heffron Park. Sorry, councillor Nielsen, I'll have to tell my story. But when I was collecting at Heffron Park at the Netball Courts, it became obvious to me that we were missing and lacking something. And that was shade and shade covers. So I do fully support this. And I thank council for looking after the community in another way and an opportunity has come up. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Luxford.
Yeah, just a question, Mr Mayor. If we can just go to page 279 in the business paper, a question through to the relevant officer. Is that what it's going to look like? Figure five, sorry?
Thank you very much, Mr Clark. Councillor?
Yep. Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, that is correct. Figure five is conceptually what, it looks like that design is based off the tiered seating, shade structure that exists adjacent to the synthetic field and the Heffron Tennis Courts.
Thank you, councillor Luxford.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm overstuck on this, that I'm in favour of the concept, but I don't know about this actual design. Because, yeah, the, over on the football field there, the synthetic, it's quite slightly a bit different, you know? And I'm not sure about this over-the-courts business. Looks to me like, you know, a greenhouse or some such thing. Yeah. Is there some way we can maybe improve on the design to make it look not so ugly in our beautiful park?
Mr Clark? Okay, thank you. I'll take that as a comment then. There being no further speakers. Councillor Sed to close the debate. Councillor Sed, okay, I'll now move it. All those in favour of the motion is moved by councillor Sed? All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. Thank you. Okay. We will now move to the next item, which had a speaker, NM6/22, notice of motion from councillor Olive, record of ESBS regrowth in the Randwick Environment Park, hazard reduction burn sites. Mr Olive and seconded by councillor Nielsen. And before we begin this, councillors, while I may kick myself later, I'd just like to commend you on your brevity this evening. So well done. Councillor Olive.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to commend motion number NM622 to the council. On December the 6th, Fire and Rescue New South Wales carried out a hazard reduction burn in the Randwick Environment Park. This area had been filled previously by Randwick Council and was prepared for the hazard reduction burn. In the process, there were approximately two areas in the park. It was shown by Mrs McGur in a map that were about approximately the size of three-quarter football fields that were cleared. And as you saw the result there, the ground, the vegetation was cleared. And what was left was a scene of tree stumps and sandy cleared area. Now, to the local residents that caused some alarm. Now, why is this area particularly important in terms of conservation? It's because it's right in the Eastern Suburbs Banksia Scrub recovery areas of the Randwick Environment Park. Why is Eastern Suburbs Banksia Scrub important? It's, two days afterwards, it was listed as critically endangered by the federal government. So this means that it is nationally and also statewide important plant community. Previously, where Eastern Suburbs Banksia Scrub covered huge areas between Botany Bay and Port Jackson. Now it's been reduced, according to the DCP, to about 1% of its former area. It has also cultural significance to First Nations groups. I was talking to Peter Cooley, quite incidentally, the CEO of Indigro. And he was saying that Eastern Suburbs Banksia Scrub had particular significance for his community. Now, it is, there are sorts of plants that we associate with Eastern Suburbs Banksia Scrub, things like banksias from which it gets its name, wattles, xanthirias, various types of ferns, hakeas, and a whole range of others. And these plants are designed, adapted to the nutrient-poor sands that exist around Sydney. It also is a haven, a habitat, a home for various fauna, ring-tailed opossums, antechinus, various native birds such as honeyeaters, native honeyeaters, wrens and finches. So it has, you know, sort of particular ecological import. Now, the council officers and staff who oversaw the burns have a hope that in those particular areas, that Eastern Suburbs Banksia Scrub will return. It's been indicated by them that it's necessary for germination of a lot of the plant species to have a certain amount of fire in order to be able to procreate or to germinate and regrow. However, as we heard before, there's concern from the community about the nature of the burn. Was it too hot? Was it cool burning that occurred? Which may be more appropriate to what is required for the regrowth of Eastern Suburbs Banksia Scrub. I spoke to council staff previously and about the idea of recording the regrowth.
Councillor Olive, you're approaching five minutes.
Oh, five minutes?
You're approaching five minutes, I'll let you wrap up.
Okay. I talked to council staff about recording the regrowth because this is an opportunity for education for everyone. And so, you know, sort of in that part A of this motion, it says what the council holds at the moment in terms of records, that they have photos, they are doing inventories of the emerging species over these sites. They also have report, regular reports. But thus far, that's been kept for the council and also for the department to report to the department. I'm saying that this should be shared with the community on the council's website. And that's what part two goes, to have monthly reports of photos, inventories and reports. And part three is also about having on the council in Randwick Environment Park webpage links to all the other mentions of the environment park on the council's, that the council has access to.
Okay. Thank you very much, councillor Olive. Councillor Nielsen. Councillor Olive, you have to turn it off.
Just to be very brief, but I commend councillor Olive for putting this forward and particularly in terms of the points he was raising, which are B and C in our business paper. And I think this is all going to enhance our knowledge of Eastern Suburbs Banksia Scrub and help us to be even better minders of our environment. So I commend this motion to you all.
Thank you. There being no further speakers. Councillor Olive, you'll find no need to close the debate. Okay, thank you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Okay. NM19/22, notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld, dog-friendly beach at the northern end of Frenchman's Beach. Moved councillor Rosenfeld. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor D'Souza. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, we are one of the few coastal councils in Sydney without a designated dog-friendly beach. Bayside, Willara, Sutherland, Mossman and Northern Beach councils have at least one of these, in some cases more than one of these, for their residents to enjoy. The population of dogs in Randwick has increased in the last two years since the COVID pandemic started. And I do believe, unlike what I heard earlier from our guests, that there is a desire in the community for our LGA to implement a dog-friendly beach. I have had a fair bit of feedback on this. And even since the business paper came out, and I've also been telling people that I'm putting this notice of motion in on support of that from the many, many dog lovers in the LGA. And indeed, this issue is also, and as most of you will know, especially the returning councillors, is also part of the council's current open space and recreational needs strategy. However, I do urge that action is needed now to take a permanent solution. It's great that it was in that paper from last July, but I really urge it now. Now, as David kindly gave everyone and as per my email today, it's the northern end of Frenchman's Beach, between the Breakwater to the south and Yarra Point to the north, where my cursor is, would be an ideal place as there is good access to the beach, an adequate room for dogs to run around, just that little stretch. They won't go any further. We'll, I'm sure the council ranges and will ensure that. Signs will be erected to remind visitors to pick up dog poo as well as indicating the location of the dog-friendly beach in the area. Dispenses with a regular supply of FOGO bags will be there as we see in a lot of other dog-friendly off-leash parks. And two to three garbage bins with regular collections. I'm saying quite regular because obviously, as you can imagine, these need to be cleaned out fairly quickly. So fellow councillors, I urge you to support this motion. And thank you very much for hearing me out.
Councillor D'Souza is the seconder.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, it's often said, a dog is a man's best friend. And I can tell you from my own experiences that whenever I was a pharmacist, as you'll know, and then I did other community work, I would often get home late at night. And the first person, and sometimes the only person to greet me was my dog. No matter how late it was, you know the feeling, I'm sure if you have a dog, the only person would come would be my dog. And my meal would sit on the table because I'd be coming home so late. But on this occasion, I got home and the dog greeted me. And we had our little fun. I went to the table and the meal wasn't there.
So councillor Pandefini, could I, point of order? Okay, councillor?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Councillor Pandefini.
I don't understand what this has to do with a dog's beach.
What I will remind councillor D'Souza is to remain as relevant as he can to the motion, please.
Well, it's so important to know why we're here and the importance of what we're voting on. And the point I was trying to make is that dogs are very important in many people's lives. And this dog park that councillor Rosenfeld has put forward, as he points out, we have it in most, if not all, the local government areas. Every time I go somewhere and at the elections, the general manager will confirm this. When we had our first meeting for this new council, one of the requests was a dog park. A dog park where... A dog park where dogs could swim. And she said we'll investigate it and now it's been brought to the council and councillor Rosenfeld has requested investigation. Now, there is definitely need. And when there's a need, we should pursue it. And I'm hoping council does pursue it because dogs are man's best friend for many of us. And dogs also need the same opportunities and the same opportunities to have fun and not just running around without the leash. But also, there are many dogs and many dog owners that like swimming or their dogs swim in the ocean. And this is the place that's been selected. I've had it, I've heard people say is the right location. Let's investigate it and let's make a fist out of it and hope we get a dog park or dog swimming area in Randwick, the Randwick local government area, very, very soon, if not immediately.
Thank you, I'll go to councillor Pandafini, then councillor Veitch, then am I correct councillor Luxford? Okay, thank you.
I guess I would be concerned that there hasn't been much community consultation regarding this motion. We've had Mr Chris, no, who have we had here? Yeah, Mr Charles Abella, who's made the time to come in and has spoken about the concern by the community. And so it doesn't feel like there's been much, has been presented as to why we need to investigate it, rather than just saying that lots of people have mentioned that we need a dog beach. I think that the idea that the list of dog beaches close to us is kind of a point against doing this because there's plenty of places that people can take their dogs, you know, to a beach and, you know, you don't just have one because every other council has one. There's heaps of parks. I mean, I think it'd be great to maybe look at maybe more park areas if that's what's needed. But I certainly do not think that a beach is the place for dogs. I think that there's more issues than just children and the dog poo, for example. I think that there's issues of animals and I don't think that dogs are great with birds. You know, I can't understand why we would need a dog beach, thanks.
Councillor Veitch.
Thank you. I won't be supporting the motion. Look, they are contentious issues, we know that in West Ward. We're still waiting for an off-leash park in West Ward, which we'd be very grateful for. And so, yeah, there is a lot of demand from owners of dogs for more space. But they are contentious issues and there's a lot of people, for all the people who want off-leash dog parks and off-leash running areas, there's probably the exact amount of people who don't support that. I also note that the councillor hasn't proposed it being on a beach side location, hasn't proposed it for Maruba Beach, but in fact for a different ward, which perhaps, you know, speaks to how popular it may be. So I thought that was, you know, interesting, given Maruba is quite a large beach. Our beaches are full of native seabirds, migratory birds. They still, even though it's urban areas, they still do come, they still do need that space and that shelter. And while there's obviously a lot of people who use those beaches, having dogs running around will have an impact. You do see that on the south coast as well, where you see these birds and little signs around to try and keep the dogs away. There's seals, we even occasionally have penguins come up in our Randwick LGA beaches. And I guess the other point is, there are already people who come down and walk their dogs on our beaches. It's done in a very low-key way, it's not strictly by the rules, by the books. But people do come down in the early hours of the morning, maybe in the evening, and walk their dog in a really low-key manner and I think people turn a bit of a blind eye. Once you open it up, it will be open slather. It's not just going to be the people from La Perouse or Chifley or whatever who come down to walk their dogs there. It will literally be from all over the eastern suburbs. I actually know people who come to Yarra Bay from Alexandria early in the morning to walk their dog there. So you're going to get people from all over the shop, that's going to be open. And I would say at every other council meeting, we're talking about parking and traffic and amenity issues at La Perouse and South Ward. So once this becomes a dog beach, you're just going to compound those issues and you're going to be getting a bunch of people who are just going to be from all over Sydney, you know, coming down to walk their dogs there because of course the dogs do love it. But it's, I don't know if it's the right place. And I'm sure the motion is very well-intentioned because obviously it's a fun thing to be able to walk your dog on the beach and the dogs love it and it's a really enjoyable thing to do. But in a congested urban area where there's a lot of demand on our beaches, I'm just not sure it's the right pool. Thank you.
Councillor Luxford, then councillor Chapel, then councillor Sid.
Just a question through to the relevant officer. Have we not already identified another beach for this purpose in our outdoor recreation policy?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. In council's open space and recreational strategy, strategic approach, sorry, 3.7 notes. Our intent to identify an appropriate location and implement a trial on a beach location for dog off-leash times. I believe there was a recent motion last year in which there was another suggestion for another beach. And times, I can't recall if that motion was successful. However, the strategy looks to identify firstly an appropriate location.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel, then I'll go to councillor Sid. Yeah, I'll go to councillor Chapel, then I'll go to councillor Sid. Thank you councillor Sid, I'll go to councillor Chapel, then I'll go to you.
Sorry, I'll just be very brief. I have some fairly significant concerns about the motion. I think one of the ones that's probably going to be shared by most of the councillors in this area is the issue of parking. This is already an area that on a sunny day is congested. If we have a dog park here, literally bronty upwards is going to be coming to this site on a regular basis. We're going to encourage more people with their dogs to get in cars to go drive somewhere instead of walking in their local park. I mean, I think that is overall a negative. And just further to what councillor Veitch was mentioning, I mean, we know that sand dunes are highly ecologically sensitive. Dogs running around them is something that should not be done without significant environmental investigation. I think this motion goes too far too quickly and should be reworked.
Thank you, councillor Sid.
A question and also a comment. I agree with what the director said a moment ago, I think it was councillor De Roche actually, who said to do it at Yarra Bay. And to also remind councillors that we did do a comprehensive community consultation and it's how it ended up in the actual open spaces plan. If you have a look at the business paper of July of last year, you'll see where there's comprehensive comments from the community, not just on this, but on the whole open spaces plan. So there has been a study done on it. And we did debate on where we would put it, if it was a trial, and I think the trial was at Yarra Bay. But my question is, because it is on here, it's 3.7, when is the timeline that we would trial it? Is there an actual timeline that we were meant to trial it?
Through to Mr Clark.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. After the adoption of the strategy, council offices essentially set out to develop action plans to support all of the informing strategies and all of the strategic approaches. I believe the operational plan and delivery plan will be before council, which includes those strategic approaches in the coming April council meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Sid.
I know I might be putting you in this, but in your opinion, is it better to wait till that comes out in April? And I'm not trying to put yours away, but do we wait till April? That way we can make another decision and councillor Rosenfeld can then bring up his motion in April to go with the strategy.
Ultimately, sorry, through you, Mr Mayor, that is a matter for council. The intent of the strategic approach in identifying an appropriate location is to investigate what land use is appropriate. There is precedence in front of the courts or recently gone through the courts at Northern Beaches Council where one of these off-leash beaches was removed. So this identification of a suitable location is imperative to the ongoing success of the trial and the future dog park.
Thank you.
Mr Mayor, can't we just put the motion now, please?
I think there are... Yeah, just to wrap up the debate and just to answer a couple of the comments. Councillor Pandafini, I agree there should be community consultation and that's why I basically said council investigate. So part of that investigation is to have community consultation. As far as Maruba Beach, Maruba Beach just has too much swell unfortunately. I have seen dog beaches put in inappropriate places in the south coast where there's too much swell and I've seen dogs get injured and what have you. Personally, it'd be great because I live in Maruba, as most of you guys know. But there's just too much swell. And just to remind, I'm only looking at a small stretch of beach. I understand, yes, the beach is there, but the beach is there to share and there's a lot of, you know, very long coastline for all the other persons to enjoy the beach, both to the south of there and obviously to the north at the Yarra. So, thank you.
Thank you. There being no further speakers and councillor Rosenfeld having closed the debate. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that lost. Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to NM20. Beg your pardon? I've already called it. Thank you. There being no further speakers. Just in future, if you do want a division, call it immediately, we've now moved on. NM21/22, notice of motion from councillor Veitch. Impact of bus cuts and privatisation, moved by councillor Veitch, seconded by councillor Luxford.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I won't speak long, I think everyone in this room is really familiar with the issues of the bus cuts and privatisations. I was approached by the speaker whose bus had been cut and he's now experiencing extensive delays, having to hop on and off and transfer. The buses aren't meeting up, the transport buses aren't meeting up. And this is the kind of issue that we're hearing about. So, you know, I am, there are so many people in our community who are completely dependent on public transport. We all use it, we all need to use it at times. Young people use it. I'm very concerned that a lot of routes servicing the sort of like slightly more peripheral areas of the LGA have been cut. It means young people, young women find it very difficult to get in around from home and from going out at night time. The list goes on. I think we all know the details and we all have local residents in our areas who would have been contacting us in relation to specific routes. There is an upper house inquiry on, at the moment, it finishes shortly, but there is a small window of time for council to go out to the community using our commerce channels and ask people to make a submission and indeed to make a submission ourselves. And so I really do hope you can support the motion, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Luxford is the second.
I commend councillor Veitch for bringing this motion forward here tonight. I too have received many complaints, a lot from the elderly who now feel they are, you know, they're stuck. They can't get to their shopping centres anymore if they are mobile. It sometimes takes two or three buses. I myself use public transport and last week had to go to the city. The light rail didn't show up. When it did show up, it took me 40 minutes to get to the Queen Victoria Building. Subsequently, I was then running for the next spot. I must say that the light rail is really not doing, you know, thank God, it's not running at capacity because having to stand up all the way with no air in those carriages is just a disaster. These bus cuts have also become a great social disaster of our area. The impacts that have been made on a social kind of aspect are disgusting. And the government should be taken to task for what they've done to our community. And I just might add that this weekend marks the end of public transport, public buses, the STA in New South Wales, in Sydney. So after this weekend, yeah, there will be no more public buses running in Sydney anymore. And that's quite a shame because the old STA, which then became, you know, numerous other agencies, did a fantastic job throughout Sydney. So it should be known and noted that, yeah, public buses have now died. So I commend councillor Veitch and I commend everyone to support this motion.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, just on the point of privatisation only, just need to point out. It's not actually privatisation, it's franchise agreement. The buses, the bus stops, the depots all belong to the government. The government still sets the timetables. They just franchise a private firm with expertise to operate the buses according to the fixed timetable with more efficiency and performance. When the same thing was done in the inner west, it improved time performance of the buses significantly. People had fewer delayed buses, thank you.
Thank you, there being no further speakers. So close. Councillor Burst.
I'll speak against the motion. I've had a lot of local residents contact me actually saying how much easier it is to get to where they want to go. If you're in the morning peak or the afternoon peak, you've got better services. People that want to get up to the hospitals or get up to Bondi Junction can now get one bus the night, the N or the 390N. It goes all the way through, it gets, they can get to Randwick Hospital, they can get to Bondi Junction. So no system is perfect, none of us are perfect, but we all strive to do better. So I think 80% of the routes makes sense, but there is about 20% that needs to be worked on and there definitely needs to be some changes. But you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. We have had a lot of improvements. The amount of times that people have waited for the 392 in a side street for 20 minutes and it never turned up. And then had to walk to the main road and get a 394 anyway. So now you've got some shrewdie with schedules, so there's a positive. So, you know, we shouldn't, you know, it's not always, the glass is not always half-empty, it's not always half-full. Sometimes we've just got to drink from both sides of the cup. But it is, it will improve and it's a matter of us fighting for the changes. Instead of saying the whole thing is wrong, tell us what's wrong with the little sections that we need to work on and then we can all improve as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Veitch to close the debate, there being no further debate. All those in favour of the motion? All those against? You actually have to say no? No, okay, I declare that carried. Thank you. We now move on to the next one. NM22/22, notice of motion from councillor Veitch. Motion for the 2022 National General Assembly of Local Government Promoting the Circular Economy and Opposing Ways to Energy Incinerators, councillor Veitch.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Once again, our wonderful speaker, Mr Chris Hanson, spoke very eloquently on this. It does actually mean something, it doesn't seem like much, but going to these conferences and speaking on behalf of local communities and getting those issues out to a wider audience is important. There was a lot of, people were very happy when we put up that motion to the local government New South Wales conference. Councillor Burst and the mayor both spoke and the community was very, very happy to hear that carried. And actually, as a result, local government New South Wales is preparing its own submission on this issue. So it does make a difference. Obviously, you have to have those rallies, all the other community action that's been really strong support and this is just adding to that. It doesn't contravene any of the other motions that have come to council. We do have our own sustainable procurement policy. We have a really successful policy on FOGO that has been embraced by the community. People want to move towards renewables. People want to move towards renewables and they want to, they're not in favour of waste or energy or any other type of incinerators. So I hope you'll support this motion. We can take it to the national conference. It will obviously need to be supported by the board, but it would be wonderful to have your support. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder for the motion as moved by councillor Veitch? Seconded by councillor Nielsen. Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being councillor Burst.
Thank you councillor Veitch for bringing up this motion. It's good to see that we're endorsing the strategies of the liberal federal government and also the state liberal governments. It's good to see that we've got $356 million invested to build circular economy in New South Wales over the next five years and to tackle waste and phase out single-use plastics. So we're ready going down that path for liberal, state liberals and the federal liberals are already working on that. There's over $70 billion in grants and initiatives that are spread across Australia now in funding pools to, and Australian-based companies across priority sectors to support this. We've also got the New South Wales, New South Wales getting serious about the circular economy. And if you want to judge the circular economy, you need to have metrics. So New South Wales local councils will actively track their waste and reuse metrics under a New South Wales state government initiative announced on Monday. So there'll be two dashboard tools created by the government-funded body, New South Wales Circular, and for the first time make accessible data that up until now has been invisible to local councils and the public. So I commend the New South Wales Liberal Government and federal governments for their, their work on this. And yes, I support this, but this is already happening right here as we speak, right now. Both levels of government are already working on this. So thank you councillor Veitch.
Thank you. Councillor Veitch to close the debate.
Thank you. Glad to see the Liberal Party following the Greens policies that we've been promoting for decades and happy to get your support for this. I commend the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay. NM twenty-three slash twenty-two. Notice of motion from councillor Veitch. Motion for the 2022 National General Assembly of Local Government addressing the impacts of anthropogenic global warming. Moved councillor Veitch. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Olive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do realise I've got a few motions up, but that's what tends to happen when we go to one of these conferences. Councillors, we heard from the speaker, Mr. Alan Griffin. He's a resident, I believe, of Coogee or our local LGA, but he hails from the Brezza Plain and Ganada. And I met him recently and we spoke at length just really about the devastating effects of climate change on the environment where he's come from. Look, there's, I doubt whether there's a single person in this room who hasn't either been personally affected by the events of recent years or had friends or family. You know, we have, I remember a couple of years ago, the whole of Sydney was shrouded in smoke. You know, I've got pictures of Maruba Beach just covered in, in smoke during the fires. Our family were personally down in the mega fire near Conjola on New Year's Eve in late 2019. The floods that we have been seeing are just beyond belief. When you hear about floods rising over two and a half or two metres beyond what they were just a few years ago, it's, it's just shocking. And we've got another mass coral bleaching event up at the Great Barrier Reef. And I just heard today or yesterday that one of the Antarctic weather stations is recording 40 degrees above the average temperature that's to be expected for this time of year. We've had fires and floods across the world and we just can no longer afford to ignore what, what's happening. We're looking at governments, whole areas are becoming uninsurable and governments are going to have to, to cover that. We know that in fact many of the people up in Lismore and the Northern Rivers aren't insured because they could not afford the insurance. You know, so there's thousands of people homeless. We need to support these communities and we need to actually do tackle the causes of those. And I'll read just a little tiny quote from the, from the Sydney Morning Herald on Saturday from a resident up in the Northern Rivers, Mr. Aidan Ricketts, who personally rescued 20 or 30 people. Successive governments have betrayed Australians by not properly planning for the disasters they knew were coming while not acknowledging climate change. This is the climate catastrophe. It's in our faces. This is what they have been warning us about. Ricketts says that to deny the role of climate change in catastrophes facing communities like his goes beyond political reluctance to reduce emissions. It prevents communities from preparing to save their own lives. Ricketts is not the only person with that view. We have let our communities down by not actually addressing the causes and preparing for what is happening. So I really hope you can support this motion and hear the words of Mr. Alan Griffin. He took the time, it was the first time he's spoken at a council meeting. As a First Nations member of our community who, who has strong ties to his country. And I hope you can support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Olive.
Yes, I heard on an ABC report today that Antarctica is experiencing warmer than usual weather. And the concern is that if this goes on, the ice will start to thin. This is an emergency, a climate emergency that we're in and we need to do something dire about it. It won't be necessarily business as usual. So therefore, you know, sort of in this motion, targets which are, emissions targets, 75% reduction by 2030 and net zero emissions by 2035. The good news is that with the current technology that we have, it's within our reach. If we look at solar, wind, batteries, pumped hydro and extending transmission lines, we can actually reduce, we can actually reach those targets. And this is not accounting for the, the new technologies, hydrogen technologies and other technologies which we haven't thought of yet coming online. So I commend this motion to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson. Councillor Olive, can you please turn off your microphone? Thank you.
I'd like to move an amendment. I'd like to move that we keep one, we keep two, A and B. We delete C, D and E and we make a new C, which is commit to a reduction of 43% below 2005 levels by 2030. And the reason that I'm moving this amendment is that the, the, while it's very worthy motion, I think C, D and E, as they currently have been presented by councillor Veitch, are very onerous commitments and we don't want to set ourselves targets and then fail to meet them.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Sid. Councillor Sid.
A second or quick comment that I agree with councillor Wilson because there's more of a detrimental effect. As much as this is, they're all very good points, but to introduce new taxes and levies on fossil fuel energy, as we have seen, petrol prices have gone up, the cost of living has gone up and it's very detrimental to the people that it's trying to help. We all know that at the present moment, electric cars are unaffordable. So unfortunately, people who need to, and, and women, children, men, workers, everyone needs to drive cars. And unfortunately, because of pricing, they need to drive petrol-driven cars. So if we put the cost up with new taxes and levies on fossil fuel, unfortunately, the people that need, need these will be, there will be a detriment to their style of life and the cost of living. So I agree with councillor Wilson that we just remove those, but it is a very championable thing, but it should be something that we need to be and possibly be able to achieve without putting too many hard and fast rules. 2030 is only eight years away. So, thank you, Mr.
Thank you. Councillor Veitch, against the amendment?
I won't be supporting the amendment and I will be speaking against it. I have not, well, I do have an idea what the reduced target's based on. It's certainly not based on science. It's not based on any report in the thousands of scientific reports that the recent IPC report was based on. It's pulled out of thin air. It's a political party policy, not based on evidence. Now, we have had the President of the UN, Antony Guterres, today calling Australia out, calling Australia out, singling us out for our inaction. It's a specious argument to suggest our electric cars are too expensive. The reason they are too expensive is because of decades of inaction by our governments. We could have all been driving electric cars like they do in Europe and many other places where they've had policies that have supported them, where they haven't had policies that have directly, you know, contributed to, to their expense and the fact that you can't charge them anywhere. We are lagging and we are now experiencing the effects of this incredible volatility in global oil and gas prices. We could have protected ourselves. We could have protected ourselves from this. Someone over there is laughing at me, but this is actually not a frigging joke. No one in this community thinks this is a joke.
Councillors, councillors.
Councillor Burst.
Councillors, could we just?
It is not fun.
Sorry, excuse me. I understand that they're very passionate views around this. However, each councillor needs to be treated with respect. Councillor Veitch, I'll ask you to return to the substance of your speech and I'll ask that she be heard in silence. Thank you.
Thank you. I would appreciate not being laughed at because this is not a joke. No one in this community would think it is. Friday is the school strike for climate. You might like to listen to the voices of the young people who are scared and angry at the inaction of governments at every level. As a local councillor, I sometimes get asked, perhaps not by the current council, but time and time again by the former council, this is not a local government matter. Well, I wish I could be leaving it to the federal and state governments, but they're not doing anything. And that's why we have local councils declaring climate emergencies. This council voted in support of a climate emergency in 2019. And so to backtrack on that now would be so disappointing. But I know I for one want to be able to look my kids in the eye and say, I tried to do something. And that is the expectation. The expectation is, is that we're not going to ignore the obvious signs of the horrendous floods that have wiped out the Northern Rivers. I mean, we had those a couple of years ago on the South Coast. We had floods in Port Macquarie and other areas last year. We've had the fires. We've had the pandemic. We've had a mouse plague. Before that, we had a drought. This summer, there's also been terrible fires and heatwaves in the, in Western Australia. I mean, I just wonder when the message is going to get through, but I won't be supporting the amendments. And I do urge councillors to have a think about what is going on and see the writing on the wall because the writing is on the wall.
Thank you. There being no further speakers on the amendment. I will now put it. All those in favour of the amendment moved by councillor Wilson? All those against? Okay, I declare that carried. The amendment now becomes the motion. There being no further speakers on the motion. Councillor Wilson, would you like to close the debate?
No, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. And I'll put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, we now move to NM twenty-four slash twenty-two. Notice of motion from councillor Veitch for the 2022 General Assembly of Local Government Gas Decarbonisation Roadmap. Moved councillor Veitch. Do I have a seconder? Seconded councillor Olive. Councillor Veitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, councillors, everyone's watching the news. We know we're in pretty dire straits when it comes to the fossil fuel economy. Gas prices have gone through the roof. It is volatile, to say the least, and we are very much exposed. But as we have heard from the speaker tonight, there are really viable alternatives. Again, with leadership from the federal government, in this case, you know, hopefully local governments with the support of communities and local governments and state governments, we can actually start to set out a path to a really viable alternative. Renewable energy is cheaper. I mean, it's, 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 it's on so many levels. This will be of benefit to our community. The other really wonderful benefit of going off gas is that the methane from gas emissions is about 80 times the strength of that by just CO2. But it doesn't last as long in the atmosphere. So if you cut down on gas, it only lasts about 20 years as opposed to what a hundred, 200 years that you get from burning coal, for example. So if you actually take steps to cut down on gas, you are actually going to draw down emissions in a much more rapid rate, where you're actually giving ourselves a little bit of, of hope. Gas is expensive. It's unhealthy. If, if any of you, you know, gone to reading groups and your child's, you know, classroom or you're a teacher, you'll know what it's like in winter when those public classrooms are closed and those gas heaters are on and it's simply toxic. It's not healthy. And there are cheap alternatives that are, you know, going to create jobs as well. And so let's get started. You know, let's not wait. We're already on that path. We're already committed, at least on a federal level, to net zero by 2050. We do have to start sometime. The earlier we start, the less of a shock it will be to people working in those industries, to the economy and so on. And as economists and the insurance companies have said for years, the longer we leave it, the, the bigger the impacts will be. If we start taking action now, there's nothing but, but benefit. So I urge you to support the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Olive?
Yes, looking on federal government websites, they, you, they are peddling the idea that by unlocking gas, you can make it more affordable in Australia. However, gas is an international commodity and set by the international markets. And so this argument is a furphy and one that the Australian government has to be pressured into trying to change. It's justification why for fracking in the Beadleloo Basin and proposed fracking in the, in the Piliger. And we can look back to 2015 when local producers were allowed to actually export. The, the, the wholesale price of gas tripled in one leap, in one small period of time. This is because it is an international commodity and any idea that it will return to a, to cheaper prices by having more gas in Australia is a first. by having more gas in Australia is a furphy. And I think that this is something that, as councillor Veitch said, that gas is going to be expensive, and renewables as a source of energy have proven to themselves to be much cheaper and are a logical alternative apart from the more friendly impacts on the climate. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further speakers. Councillor Veitch, you're okay to wave it. Okay, we'll now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? Yeah, I'm going to need a division on that. That's very hard. Okay, councillor, Mr. Kelly? Yeah, it's too late. Okay, councillor Pandefini?
Four.
Councillor Nielsen?
Four.
Councillor Veitch?
Four.
Councillor Hay?
Four.
Councillor Lutzford?
Against.
Councillor Chappell?
Four.
Councillor Rosenfield?
Against.
Councillor Olliv?
Four.
Councillor McCafferty? Councillor Wilson?
Four.
Councillor Sed?
Against.
Councillor Burst?
Against the gas component.
Councillor D'Souza?
Four.
And the mayor's against. I declare that carried. Okay, thank you. We now move to the last item before the break. NM twenty-five slash twenty-two. Notice of motion from councillor Chappell, synthetic turf at Coral Sea Park postponement. Moved by councillor Chappell. Do I have a seconder? I'm assuming there's a seconder. Councillor Pandefini, thank you. Councillor Chappell?
Thanks so much. Can I just check that the version on the screen is the amended version that I sent through? Yes, it is. Thank you. Okay, sorry. Thank you, everybody. I know this is the last motion before we have a break, so I will keep it as brief as I possibly can. I've been looking into this proposal at Coral Sea, and as I see it, the main concern here is that we build something that is not fit for purpose, that costs us a lot of money, that has bad environmental impacts with microplastics and non-recyclable content, and needs to be replaced regularly. I think those are all concerns we should take quite seriously, and I think we should be prepared to delay this proposal briefly to get some more evidence, because more information is coming out at the moment. Many of the new councillors here haven't been through the initial process discussing these fields, and the available data raises a lot of questions about the proposal, which hopefully we could then answer. It's also relevant because... I'm bringing this because the science in this space is far from settled. In November 2021, the New South Wales Coalition Government, not a left-wing government, organised an independent review into the design use and impacts of synthetics in public spaces. And they did so because of the significant health and environmental impacts raised, concerns raised about the fields. There are no standards currently for synthetic turf, which is quite astonishing. I mean, there's standards for every toy that I buy for my child, but there aren't nationally accepted standards for synthetic turf. And they're also climate exposed, which is shown by the Mitchelton example in Queensland, where flooding literally washed away a two-year-old $1.5 million synthetic turf field. Like, this wasn't an old rundown facility. This was a relatively recent facility, built, again, with a state grant. They got completely trashed, and the club now needs to raise a million bucks. There are some situations where synthetic is going to be a great answer, and I recognise that. We currently do have two synthetic fields less than one and a half kilometres from the Coral Sea Park. So we have the one at Heffron, and we have the one at Pioneer Park. Pioneer's very new. We're still kind of seeing how that's going to work and how that's going to play out. I don't think we should rush to install more. Wulara Council has a little while back imposed a moratorium on synthetic fields. Lane Cove Council, which was proceeding with a synthetic field at Bob Campbell Oval, has pulled back on that proposal, and they are now going with a 100% natural turf proposal that they are co-designing with the community. And I think probably the best-practice natural turf field that I've been fortunate to see is Middlehead Oval over at Lane Cove, which is a gorgeous field, and it has about forty-nine hours of use in the winter season, which is significantly more than the twenty-five, thirty ballpark that we were being given by the club. And it looks fantastic at the end of the season. And it does so because they have kind of started from the ground up. They've built the field so that the turf can do well, and they're doing best-practice care there. The question is, if natural turf is a viable alternative, and this is why my motion asks for a cost-benefit analysis to allow us to take an informed position on this. I think we need to look at them side by side and see what we can actually do here. The... Yeah. One of the other concerns is that the synthetic turf fields don't absorb water the way regular turf does, which is great, because you can play on it, but it's not so great for the surrounding area. And we do know that the Maribor kind of basin drains into Coral Sea Park. I think there are some significant questions about where that water's all going to go, especially if it loses 20% of the park's surface. That water is going to move somewhere. What we might see is a synthetic field that's in action, but a turf, natural turf around it that never recovers, and that would be a significant problem. I played soccer in AFL, and natural grass is very much the preferred surface for them. You lose time to rain, but you don't lose it to extreme heat. Whether that ends up balancing out at the end of the year is a question for research. It's not a question for me to kind of say here. Players who have played on synthetic, though, have shown me some scars and burns from the turf that is genuinely shocking. And I say that as someone who sustained some fairly substantial injuries in my playing career. I've coached little kids' soccer at Maribor United, and we want little kids playing on natural grass because their bodies are so little they can't deal with dissipating heat. So a hot field is super bad for little kids. It's not great for an adult, but it's super bad for a little kid. As Mr. Robinson acknowledges, the club isn't united on this. Many I've spoken to, many other coaches, many other parents have significant concerns about this installation of synthetics here, or they didn't even know about it. I think, again, a short delay in going ahead with any proposal for this area allows those people to become involved in the process. The other thing I would say is there's been an explosion in installation of synthetic fields around New South Wales, and a lot of that is because grants are being given out by the state government, or were being given out by the state government, to install these fields. And they have advocates. They have people who are making a lot of money off installing these fields. So there are lots of people in there lobbying for synthetic fields to be built. And they're not always going to be the best answers. But natural grass, which is an excellent surface to play on, when done as a best-practice field, is a gorgeous thing to be around for environmental values, for local social people, and for sport. Doesn't have anybody in its corner advertising and making the big bucks off it the way is currently happening in synthetics. And I think what we want to do is get a full look at what's facing us financially, what's facing us environmentally, what the demands are for the sport at this field. And then I think we can all make a really informed decision about what's going to happen here.
Thank you. Councillor Pandefini?
I just wanted to commend the motion and also urge councillors for this short, very short delay, so we have the best information, and we can make a financial, sustainable decision for the residents and the clubs and the community and the kids.
Councillor Rosenfield?
Yes, I'm against the motion mainly for practicality reasons. There's just too many days lost when there's rain. Unfortunately, there's just too many weekends where the kids can't play. We build this, and they'll be able to play. And for me, that's the really, the most important issue here. So I'm against the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Veitch, then councillor D'Souza? Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, that is correct. I actually had councillor Lutzford, then councillor Veitch. I did. It's in the notes.
Just a question through to the relevant officer. How many hours per week is Coral Sea Park being utilised for football?
Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Three, Mr. Mayor. I also don't have the exact figure in front of me. I do note the speaker to the motion earlier noted that they were in the vicinity of thirty to forty hours, which is in, I suppose, over and above the capacity for which we normally use a natural turf for...
Thank you. Councillor Lutzford, is that all your questions? Okay, thank you. I now go to councillor Veitch and then councillor D'Souza.
Thank you. I'd really like to support and commend this motion by councillor Chappell, who not only has kids in the club, but plays herself and coaches. So she's probably, out of all of us in this room, the best qualified to speak on this. As a councillor who's been on since last term, there was a lot of discussion about this in the previous term. But one thing I don't ever recall receiving was sort of a comparison of how much it would cost to install one of those good amended fields with the compost, with the irrigation, and so on, that would deliver those additional hours and support the club. We've literally never, from my recollection, the best of my recollection, received a detailed comparison, so we could actually make an informed decision. I've heard councillors speak, you know, raising issues with one of my motions, saying, oh, how can we vote on this when we don't really know the implications? But here they're saying, oh, we can't delay. We need to rush and do this. So you have to be consistent, and councillor Chappell is simply asking that we press the pause button and get some more information and look at some alternatives. Because the fact is, in our last budget, we committed well over $2 million to this field. We already have fields in Pioneer's Park, at Heffron, and at Latham. This particular field is really close. It's in a built-up residential area. I think it is on a flood plain. It's certainly in a basin. And not only the odour... If you've ever walked next to a playground, one of those things, the odour is very, very strong. Other people who walk dogs and so on hate them. At least, I know the dog walkers in my area really don't like them. And we do need to... This is simply... We're waiting for the chief scientist is reviewing the environmental and health impacts of these. And I do ask councillors to consider that, you know, by going and voting in favour and committing funds to this, without that report being handed down, what will we actually do if it recommends, say, for instance, well, these aren't really suitable for children under ten, or something like that? Or these contribute massively to local microplastic pollution in our waterways? One of... In every single consultation we do, I would say one of the top reasons people like living in the city of Randwick is our beaches and waterways and coastlines. And the parkways, open space, but our beaches and waterways and the health and cleanliness of our local waterways is one of the things that are most highly valued by our community members. And if you've ever been to one of those fields, they are literally... They're not just nice, green, you know, fake grass. They are full of this black rubber crumb. So they're sort of green and black, really. They have this sort of really foul, toxic-smelling rubber crumb, which has to be replenished. It has to be sort of combed. I've seen in other places in Sydney little, sort of like tractor-like things going around with a comb, going around and smoothing it out. It's certainly not something I think is appropriate for kids to be playing on, quite literally. So this is a great motion, and it's sensible, it's prudent, and it's not a big ask. It's doing our job, which is getting more information, making decisions based on evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start with a question to the relevant officer. Did we consult? I'm sure we did. But did we consult on this, and what was the outcome of the consultation?
Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Three, Mr. Mayor. Yes, council consulted on the project, and there was a majority support in the community for the project. Sorry, there was community consultation for this particular project, and there was majority support for the project.
And a second question, Mr. Clark. Maintenance of this field, is it cheaper to maintain a synthetic field or a grass, a turf field? Again?
Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Three, Mr. Mayor. The maintenance costs are slightly less, not significantly less, but they're less intrusive, so they're less frequent and require less plant fleet to conduct.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark. And, Mr. Mayor, this council is a very responsible council. Now, I've learned over the ten years in this council that our principle, that two principles guide us in our decision-making. And one is the principle of intergenerational equity, and I won't go there. I'll let others research it. But the other principle is the precautionary principle. And the precautionary principle guides council. And this council has a duty of care to the community. Now, we wouldn't be going ahead with some willy-nilly field or idea if public safety was a concern, or even a minor concern. We've done our work. We've done our research. The community has spoken. Let's move forward. Let's do the right thing on this, and I won't be supporting this motion. There's one other thing. The other councillor mentioned it was a flawed argument. She said that the mover was a mother who was a coach and had two children playing, and that made her an authority on this. But I must point out, she's not a scientist, so I'll leave it at that.
I have a question from councillor Sed, and then I will go to councillor Chappell to close the debate.
Just two quick questions to the director of City Services through you, Mr. Mayor. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the synthetic at Heffron Park is used so often that I think it's actually paid for itself. Is that right, Mr. Clark? It's actually... I was just talking about the fees and charges of the Heffron synthetic, and it's used so often that it's actually virtually paid for itself. Is that right? No, it doesn't matter.
Sorry, thank you. Three, Mr. Mayor. I don't have the payback period, but that is used at 100% capacity at, I suppose, fairly incentivised rates to the community. It's definitely not at a commercial rate.
But in your opinion as well, if we did stick to turf fields, being soccer the way it is, with the goals, is there any way possible, do you think you guys can actually maintain those fields with the goals in the centre perfectly for a whole season? And then, without having to shut it down for about four months to rebuild it again, and rebuild it every year after that?
Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Generally speaking, our fields are now currently used 70%. Or there's been an increase of hours booked for sporting fields by way of 70% over the last five years. That increase is considering that five years ago, our fields were almost at saturation at peak times. So to answer your question, it is becoming extremely complex to be able to maintain our fields. And we have a two-week window at best to try and accommodate renovations and refurbishment of a natural turf field, which is under constant pressure, current pressure, I would say, from specifically soccer clubs to get on a lot earlier than what our sporting season would allow.
Thank you. Is there a question, councillor Pandefini? Yep?
I've also got a question for you. But if we wait for this report, which is due in the next month, is it due in the next month? And the response is that it's not healthy for children and that we aren't allowed to have children on these fields, is that going to be an extremely expensive thing to deal with? Like, if we can't actually use it for sports clubs for children, what would the kind of... What would we do then?
Thank you. Three, Mr. Mayor. I'll have to hypothetically, I suppose, answer that question. Obviously, should a decision be made in which council was not allowed to install that asset, then obviously, council would have to remove from the conversations that we've had holistically across the industry, we haven't... If the findings of that report were as such, then standards would have to be developed to prevent the use of that category. But that's hypothetically speaking. Synthetic fields are used across the globe for all ages, so, you know, it's very hard to answer that question without the report coming out.
Thank you. Councillor Chappell to close the debate.
Thank you all, and thank you for your contributions. Councillor D'Souza, just for your information, I do have a Bachelor of Science, so I probably have some of the relevant qualifications here. And I would also like to note that the precautionary principle is up to us to implement. It's not up to us to assume somebody else will implement for us.
not up to us to assume somebody else will implement for us, that's exactly what it is, it guides our decision-making, we are the decision-making body, we don't just assume someone else has done that. Mr Clark said the majority support in the consultation, I think if you read through the consultation, you'll find there were a significant number of people who did oppose. In cases like this, the organisation that is the club that is pressing for it often has a voice that can overwhelm some of the concerns through the rest of the community, but I don't think that means we should ignore those voices. I think in terms of maintenance, we should also note that maintenance of a synthetic turf includes full replacement of the field every however long, it's a question in my motion, but it can be seven, nine, whatever years. We should also note that patching a synthetic field is very different to patching a turf field. If somebody, you know, has a problem with the goal box or digs up a bit of the field, it's not unknown around Coral Sea Park for things to get a bit, you know, mucked up. If it's turf, you just put some more grass on it. If it's a synthetic, it's a whole other scenario and you can be up in millions of dollars actually fixing that field up because you can't just stick a little patch on it. The priority of having kids all round being able to use it is a great idea, but they won't be able to. In summer, it will be too hot for them, when it rains heavily, you can't even use even a synthetic field, it's not safe. And if only, if only the synthetic field is open and everything else is closed, you've only got 20% of the surface area of the park, which is not going to capture the amount of kids that you are wanting to actually train. You know, on a Wednesday night when my teams are down there, if there's only 20%, you know, one or two teams can train, who are you going to choose? I mean, my kids, obviously, but, and whether it pays for itself isn't actually the question here, the question is whether we are building the right piece of infrastructure for our local community. And I don't think this synthetic field is it, I'm prepared to be convinced, but I think we need all the facts in front of us to make the responsible decision, that is the duty brought upon us and our role as councillors is to make that decision responsibly with awareness of all of the facts, we don't have them, we should get them. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further speakers and the debate now being closed, I'll now put the motion, all those in favour? All those against? I declare that lost. Thank you councillors. Look, what we will now do is we will go to a short 10-minute break. When we return to that break, I'd just like to foreshadow that I'll call for a procedural motion to limit speaking times to two minutes, I'm conscious of the fact that we have a lot to get through this evening and I would strongly encourage councillors to stick to two for, two against and then put the motion in order for us to get through what is still a significant agenda, but it has been over three and a bit hours, so we do need a break. So we'll come back at 10:45. Yeah, that's fine, I'm happy to do that. All those in favour? All those against? Okay, I declare that carried. Okay, we will now deal with urgent business. Okay, thank you, there being no urgent business, I will now move on to mayoral minutes. Councillors, it's come to my attention that Mr Tony Waller, who is well-known to many across our community, in late 2021... received Queen's Birthday honours and was recently presented with an Order of Australia Medal at a ceremony held at Government House. On behalf of the entire Randwick City community and the Randwick City Council, I would like to congratulate him on what is a very prestigious award and commendation from our society. Look, everyone across this chamber knows Tony in some capacity, whether it's at Surf Lifesaving Club at Coogee, whether it's for his work tied with Wiley Baths, whether it's as a fire and rescue superintendent or as a Westpac lifesaver rescue helicopter crewman. He has had what has been a sterling career, both in his professional capacity but also is in a volunteering capacity, whether it's serving across our country in response to natural disasters. So, on behalf of all of Randwick City Council, I propose to formally congratulate Tony on his commitment and service to our community. And I note that I will host Mr Waller at a later date at the Town Hall just to mark his significant achievement. So, thank you very much, councillors, and I now commend this merril minute to the council. Thank you. Thank you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. MM7/22 Federal Election Campaign: Don't Leave Communities Behind. I think that's pretty straightforward and I'm happy to leave it with what is on the business paper. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Financial Assistance and Donations, March to April. Can I just confirm? Yep, I'm happy to leave that on the paper. All those in favour? All those against? Thank you. MM9/22 Country Women's Association of New South Wales: Celebrating 100 Years. I commend my report. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. Okay, MM10/22, I will be moving that in a slightly amended fashion. In substitute of the motion, I will add two points. The first is that council donate $10,000 to be funded from the 2021-2022 Contingency Fund to give it New South Wales Flood Appeal in support of communities impacted by the recent devastating floods in New South Wales. And the second point, support the Lismore Public Library with a donation of books to assist with the restocking of the many books that were lost in the floods in line with their request. I commend this report. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. Okay, thank you, councillors. We now move to inseriatum. And I will ask that items which are challenged, you just call out, just one second. I need a speaking list, sorry. Do you have a speaking list? Have you a speaking? Yep, thank you. Okay, GM2/22 Randwick City Quarterly Progress Report. Okay, unchallenged. GM3/22, challenged by councillor Nielsen. Okay, CP7/22 Infrastructure Contributions Bill. Challenged by councillor Chapel. Okay. CP8/22 Waste Education Resourcing. Unchallenged. CP9/22 Development Complaints Register. Okay, there's a question challenged by councillor Nielsen. Okay, CP10/22 Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal Gateway Review Decision. Challenged by councillor Olive. Okay, CP11/22 Randwick... Okay, that one's done. CP12/22 Community Event at Little Bay. Challenged by councillor Rosenfeld. Okay, CP13/22 Carbon Neutral Accreditation. Challenged by councillor Veach. Okay, POEO, that one is done. CP16, that one is done. Okay, CS6/22 Heffern Park Annual Asbestos Results. Yep, CP14 Community Investment Programme. That is challenged by councillor Nielsen. Okay, yep. Okay, CS6/22 Heffern Park Annual Asbestos Results. Unchallenged. Okay, that one is being dealt with. CS8/22. Unchallenged. Okay, that's challenged by Panda Feeny. Okay, CS9/22 Ausgrid Main Light LED Replacement, unchallenged. Okay, CS10 Cycle... CS10/22 Cycleways and Bicycle Facilities Advisory Committee. Unchallenged. CS11/22 Proposed Naming of Laparoo's Public Stairs. Challenged by councillor Sed. Okay, CO10/22 Investment Report. Unchallenged. CO11/22 Monthly Financial Report. Is that councillor Veach? Okay. CO12/22 Councillor Conduct Accountability Review Consultation Paper. Unchallenged. Okay. Can I have someone to move the unchallenged items? Moved councillor Luxford, I need a seconder. Seconded by councillor McCafferty. Okay, all those in favour? All those against? Okay, declare that challenged. We now move to the first challenged item. GM3/22 Portfolio Committee Terms of References. Challenged by councillor Nielsen.
I'd like to move that this matter be deferred for councillor briefing.
Okay, seconded by councillor Luxford. Councillor Nielsen?
The purpose of the briefing is to reach agreement on the various committees to ensure portfolio committees meet their intended purpose as well as the terms of reference.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Luxford is the seconder. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Nielsen, I assume you don't want to close the debate? All those in favour? All those against? Okay, declare that carried. Alrighty. CP7/22 councillor Chapel. Infrastructure Contributions Bill, page 75.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have circulated a very brief amendment to the recommendation here, which is just to make very brief changes to the proposed submission just to reflect some additional concerns that have been raised with me about the potential implications of the infrastructure bill.
Okay, thank you. Is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Veach. Councillor Veach? Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers, I will now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay. CP9/22 Development Complaints Register, challenged by councillor Nielsen.
My question is, I'm not sure whether to... Well, to the relevant officer. On page 96 of this report, we have a report from our legal lawyers and it's marked confidential. And I don't see... I'm wondering why this is in a public document like this. Because basically, it seems to me that, well, we are being advised not to do what was proposed by councillor Madsen and myself, and that is to have a development complaints register in the way that had been formulated. But it just seems rather strange to me that in the advice that we're given as to why we shouldn't do it, we're given confidential legal advice. Seems a bit sort of odd.
Through to the relevant officer.
Put it mildly.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Advice from lawyers is usually provided in a confidential manner. It's a matter for council whether they wish to provide that in a public document. And my understanding is that when it came to council previously, I'm not sure if I was at that meeting, that it was presented to council in an open forum. But I'll take that on notice, council.
Councillor Nielsen, follow-up question?
Yeah, please. Yes, it came at that meeting, but then it's come back to this meeting. Hasn't there been some revision in terms of the response that the lawyers have given us?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My saying is that council officers relying on the advice and the reference in the previous resolution was to see if the register could be provided in accordance with the advice and that's the basis for the report back to council.
Well, with all due respect, it actually hasn't answered the question. But I will leave the matter because I'm going to accept the advice from the lawyers. However, it just seems very unsatisfactory to me that we get exactly the same advice back as we did previously. I mean, surely they could have just tightened it up a little bit, couldn't they? Anyway, I'm going to leave it at that. It's up to the rest of the councillors whether they want to accept the recommendation, which is that we maintain a register but not the development paints register that councillor Madsen and I were envisaging.
Councillor Nielsen is the... Sorry, councillor Luxford is the secondary to the motion? Okay, thank you. There being no further speaker. Councillor Chapel?
Sorry, it's just a very brief question to the relevant council officer. Is there already a register of flammable cladding in the LGA? And is that something that this could potentially extend to in future? I'm not proposing it as an amendment now.
Mr Kiriaku?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, there is a register for combustible cladding in the buildings that do contain it within the city. I'm not sure whether that is a public register or not, so I can take that on notice for you.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. We now move to CP10/22 Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal Gateway Review Decision. Councillor Olive?
Yes, I've put up a motion. You can see, the purpose of the motion is that as a council, we haven't had an opportunity to actually see the amended planning proposal. I propose that it be put off for a month so that it... And brought back to the April meeting so that councillors have a chance to actually see it in its entirety before it goes out on public exhibition. This will give councillors an opportunity to to view it before residents and be able to inform residents about the proposal with full knowledge of what the planning proposal contains. I think this is proper process and I commend the idea of postponing it for a month until we get that to view for ourselves.
Do I have a seconder of the motion? Do I have a seconder of councillor Olive's motion? Councillor Panda Feeny? Okay. Are there any speakers? Councillor V... Sorry, councillor Nielsen?
I'm not pressing hard enough, sorry, I've lost the feeling. I'm just foreshadowing, I will be proposing another amendment.
Well, this is the motion. Are you foreshadowing that in the event that this loses?
Yes.
That you will move something in its place?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councillor Veach? Sorry, councillor Panda Feeny is the seconder of the motion. Did you want to speak or you're fine? Thank you, councillor Veach.
Yeah, look, there was a lot of discussion about this report because I think there was just a great deal of surprise that the actual sort of amended plans were not there on the business papers. I mean, we've been discussing this now for months, if not over 12 months. And the entire time, when it's been coming to council, I've been informing residents because so many people have a very, you know, sincere interest in this. And I've said it will come back and you'll be able to come and speak to the meeting. But actually, there is literally no report that we're voting on in a way. I know people will contend that, but I don't actually support the planning proposal as it is. So, but I do believe it should be on the business papers and that residents in the area should be able to actually see that and know what we're voting on. Just as a matter of principle. So, I understand there are other amendments which I've seen and which are also very, very good. But I do believe this should be on the business papers. Councillors shouldn't be forced to vote for something that's not on the business papers.
Okay, thank you. There being no further speakers? Yes.
Is CP68/21... We haven't put that in the business. Is it a business paper? We haven't mentioned it. Is it on tonight's business paper? It's just the title of this one. Or is this an old one?
Sorry, just for your benefit, that's October 2021.
Oh, so I was just reminding us what it was.
It's just a copy, which I assume was included in our packs as a courtesy. Thank you. You threw me there for a second, councillor Sed. Okay, thank you. There being no further speakers, I will now put it. All those in favour? Actually, this is a planning matter, we're going to have to go to a division. Okay. Councillor Panda Feeny?
Is this for the amendment?
This is for the motion as moved by councillor Olive, which is to defer the consideration of this until April with the enclosed planning proposal which was previously resolved.
For. Against.
Councillor Veach?
For.
Councillor Hay?
I'd just briefly like to say that I'm only eligible to vote on this motion because of the way we voted on CP11 and therefore I have no bikini interest and I will vote for.
Okay. Councillor Luxford?
Sorry, no. Against.
Councillor Chapel?
For.
Councillor Rosenfeld?
Against.
Councillor Olive?
For.
Councillor McCafferty?
For.
Councillor Wilson?
Against.
Councillor Sed?
Against.
Councillor Burst? Oh, he's out of the room. Councillor D'Souza? The mayor is for. I declare it carried. Okay, thank you. So we'll now deal with that. We now move on to the next item. CP12/22 Community Event at Little Bay. Mine doesn't interfere.
Okay. I'm fully supportive of this event. I'd just like to move an amendment that the community event is not held on the Saturday of the federal election. As the event is specified for a Saturday in May, as per the business paper, it's important that it's not held on the day of the federal election as 14 of the 15 councillors here are members of political parties and will be unavailable. The election will be called five to six weeks prior, so there's enough time given to plan the event. So I'd like to add that amendment, please.
Okay.
Can I move it as per the business paper with the amendment?
Thank you. Do you have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Sed. Okay, thank you. Is there any further debate? There being no further debate. I'll now put it. All those in favour? Beg your pardon? It's an excellent call. You could also just put it in the month not being May.
Only because in the business paper it said the month of May. So when I saw that, I thought, yeah. Yeah, yeah. But any other month is fine.
Could I make a suggestion before I put it? Councillor Rosenfeld, the council endorses a community event held in Little Bay. Delete the words "in May" and then you keep point B. Okay?
I'm good with that.
Yep, thank you. Okay, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, CP13/22 Carbon Neutral Accreditation. Moved councillor Veach?
Thank you. And I had just a small amendment, just a small extra dot point. Thank you. So I was just getting a bit cold asking for the aircon. Thank you. So I have, look, I think it's incredibly disappointing that the federal government, as an effect, sort of completely sabotaged this system and that we're now, you know, where we were paying less than $30,000 a year, we're going to be up from, you know, $145,000, $150,000 a year. There was a report in the Saturday paper, there was a report on the business show on the ABC last night. And unfortunately, we are not going to be in a position to be able to afford to pay this anymore. But what I would like to see is that, you know, a number of years ago, we were looking to try and get at least council operations to net zero by 2030. Now, we're going to be sort of washed in with the very, very ambitious and good 60% emission reduction target by 2030 for the entire community. But we are really in very close sight of getting our council operations to net zero in a very short period of time. There are still challenges. It essentially relates to our fleet and to the heating of the Des Rhenford Pool. And so my amendment is simply to receive a report to transition our council operations to net zero through the electrification of the fleet and changeover from gas to renewable energy at key sites by 2027. So it's simply receiving a report. We've had, you know, a great achievement in recent months with our new energy power purchase agreement, 100% renewables. Actually, we've been touting the fact that we're 100% renewables, but actually, that contract is, but actually, we're not at 100% renewables yet. We've still got a way to go. So I hope you'll support this amendment. It's simply asking for a report to see how we can, we can get there. Thank you.
Two minutes exactly. A seconder of the motion? Do I have a seconder? Do I have a seconder of this? Seconded by councillor Nielsen. Okay, councillor Nielsen, I'm assuming you don't need to speak. Councillor Sed.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going by memory. I think we've had reports on achieving all those goals by 2030 in a motion brought forward to council and that's why we've been purchasing hybrid cars. Under my mayorship, we've gone to 100% renewable electricity. We've done everything we can. I'm sure there's somewhere there that we're going by 2030. I'm not trying to cabosh it, I'm just trying to say, I think we've already got this in plans somewhere. Might have to ask a GM if she remembers it as well. I know there's a plan to achieve renewable energies and that's why we've been buying hybrids. We've gone to the 100%, we're doing everything in our power to get to 2030, I'm pretty sure.
General Manager.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The staff have been doing a lot of work in regards to council operations and they can document that in another report for council.
Thank you.
So are you saying that it's not a hassle to bring back another report?
General Manager. Nothing to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, we will now move to the next item. CP 14 slash 22, Community Investment Programme, challenged by councillor Nielsen.
I just wanted to add an amendment that I noticed that there's some unspent funds. And so I wanted to add a point D. I've emailed it to, yeah, good on you, David Kelly, you've caught it there, that any unspent funds in the 2021-22, be in the 2021-22 Community Investment Programme, be rolled over into the following financial year. That an amendment is made to the Community Investment Programme guidelines to allow this, allow this to occur each financial year, there are surplus funds.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Veach. Okay, councillor Veach, was there anything that you wanted to add? Okay, there being nothing?
I don't think, I don't think I really need to speak to anything. It's totally clear, isn't it, everybody? That if we have any unspent funds in that, roll it over, good on you.
Okay. Okay, is there a question from councillor Luxford?
Just clarification, please, on page 247, Sonia Jackson Rockpool Emporium. What does it actually do? And how useful is it?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine is saying it's an exhibition of crafts and art. It was identified as being suitable for utilizing the criteria within the guidelines. And there is a detailed assessment, I think that's been provided to councillors on that.
Follow-up question on that. So does this person make profit from all of this?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The guidelines don't exclude the person making profit as part of the creative work.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I will now put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Okay, thank you. I declare that carried. We will now move to, C, please correct me if I'm wrong, CS 8 slash 22, Fogo Catalinas Supply Options and Their Impact on Domestic Waste Management Charge, challenged by councillor Pandefini.
It was just really more of a question to the relevant officer. I just wondered if, it just seemed like a huge amount to be spending on the bags and I just wondered whether it would affect the scheme if we did one round of bags in the next six months and then made it like an opt-in thing?
Councillor Clark, Mr. Clark. Hey, to dock your pay like that.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. The rollout cost close to $1 million in the first year. We recommended a balanced approach, noting this is year two of the contract. Whilst it's not specifically proven, it is assumed anecdotally that the bags contributed to participation early on in this new, this new process. We have a contamination rate of an astronomical, I think, 1.5%. So the idea is to maintain participation, still in very early stages of the contract and test with the community through education and consultation next year to phase out the bags. It's definitely a long-term solution. The $500,000, while it is a considerable amount, we still hope to be seeing the benefits of that in diversion at the back end.
Yeah, I have one further question from councillor Veach.
So, yes, thank you. So it is literally $500,000 a year just for the bags? Is that, is that right?
Yes, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. That's two rollouts at each six-month interval of some 60,000 packages of the compostable bags. And then in addition to that, there is an allowance inside for a on-request. We enable the on-request service ladder in the first year and we didn't get many requests. It's just a provision just to maintain participation. So it was roughly $250,000 to $270,000 per quarter in the first year.
So you said two rollouts per six months. So is that four per year or just one every six months? One every six months. We just seem to have so many left. We've got a household of four and we use them a lot, but we've got stacks left, that's all.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, it's one every six months.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Pandefini, can I just confirm that you're moving a recommendation on the business paper? Okay, I need a mover of the recommendation on the business paper, please. So you're happy to move the recommendation on the? Okay, moved councillor Pandefini, seconded by, seconded by councillor Nielsen. Okay, there being no further speakers, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Okay, CS 9 slash 22, no, sorry, that's fine. CS 11 slash 22, proposal naming of the La Perouse stage after Auntie Lola Ryan, challenged by councillor Sed.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not challenging it, I'm actually approving it as per the business paper. But I just want to, as move it as per the business paper, I should say. I just want to highlight that this is a good idea, that's fantastic, but it's actually quite upsetting that Auntie Lola Ryan is quite famous for her show art and it's actually displayed at the Australian Museum. Auntie Isma Timbry has a name, a theatre named after her and also has artwork throughout Sydney. And where they both come from and live and where traditionally their granddaughters are doing show work at the moment and we don't highlight that in any of our sort of Randwick. We have, we don't do it at the museum. We don't, we have a small, very small exhibition at the museum. So what I'm virtually trying to say is that this is fantastic and it's great that they get recognition, but I still think that we should still do a lot more to recognise these women of La Perouse who are famous throughout Australia and throughout the world, yet somehow they're some sort of get forgotten in La Perouse where they actually should be. We should be very proud of the women that we have here. And also, and it's always been a bugbear of mine, that somehow we should tap into that $50 million that Cornell got and we never got any cent of it. If we could get some of that, then we could actually do this exhibitions of the show art very well. So that's, I'm just moving this move in.
Councillor Luxford.
I reserve my answer.
Okay, thank you. There being no further speakers, all those in. Councillor Chappell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, briefly. I just want to commend the motion. I think it's excellent, I think it's great we're doing it. I also just want to briefly reflect on the fact that almost everything in the Randwick LGA is named after a man, most of them former aldermen. I think putting in place plaques like this is a really important step and I think we should be looking for more opportunities to reflect the cultural and historical diversity of this place in the names of the things we have.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Okay, CO 11, 22, Monthly Financial Report, challenged by councillor Veach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I've just, I've sent through some questions to Mr. McNibbin, who kindly got back to me. Look, I just have, I guess, I guess I would like more detailed reporting each month on the status of the Heffron Centre. We are getting small reports, but just even the one we got this time, because it has been an interest of mine in tracking this over the past year or so and it has been a controversial project. We really do need to see more detailed reporting on how our budget is tracking. So, you know, for example, it says here that we've got a 4.4 million contingency, which is great, but that that had gone down due to the rainfall and we'd, you know, basically exhausted our weather contingency. But actually, that figure of 4.4 is an actual increase in the contingency from last year, which where it was actually $4 million, you know, a bit over $4 million. So it's gone up by about $300,000. And so we're just sort of getting these figures all over the place. You know, it's a bit of a challenging time we're in at the moment with pandemics and floods and rain. All these types of events do have an impact on construction. It's council's biggest project, you know, at close to $58 million. And we do need to see how things are going, where contingencies are running down or need to be checked. And I would just like to ask if that is possible to get that so I don't have to be sending these emails every month. It's just there on the business papers. Thank you.
Was that a question, through to the relevant officer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just in regards to the response sent to councillor Veach today. I'm not sure of the figure that was quoted for the contingency, but the contingency is the same that was quoted to council in August of 2021. In regards to budget reporting, as councillors will be aware, for the budget that we have, both for operational and capital works, we do a quarterly budget review each quarter, at which point in time, if there are any variations to the budget or anything that we consider risks from a financial perspective, we would include within that quarterly budget review. In regards to monthly reporting, a project, whether it be the Heffron Centre or any other project of council, is managed by a project control group. That group meets monthly and from a council decision-making perspective, I wouldn't expect there's enough information on a month-to-month basis to require a decision of council.
Thank you, councillor Veach.
Follow-up question. It really is just a simple request that I've put a number of times. This information should be publicly available. It shouldn't really be incumbent on councillors who do have questions to just sort of be emailing every month questioning figures when there are discrepancies in the figures. As I said, the last reported contingency that I could find, based on an email from yourself, was, there was a $300 difference, $300,000 difference. So it would just be helpful to have those figures clearly stated.
Councillor, can I just remind you?
It's not a big ask.
Well above your two minutes. Is there any further speakers? Councillor Luxford.
Just a question through to the relevant officer. I'm not really sure what councillor Veach is getting at here exactly, but are we not travelling well with the Heffron Centre? And some of our costs have actually been less than anticipated to begin with? So I don't see where there is a problem here.
Through to the relevant officer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The project's actually going very well. As reported to councillors previously, contingencies for capital projects go up and down as particularly for a design and construct project as, as the project works through its course. I can only imagine that councillors may be looking at the external environment and thinking that there may be changes that might risk council's project from either a timing perspective or a cost perspective. But given the timing of the tender and the timing of council's decision in relation to going to tender, we've actually hedged the risk in regards to the increase in, in costs associated with materials such as steel and timber and the likes. So while council might feel that there might be significant adjustment or change in the project because of the environment around us, that has largely been hedged. Now, in regards to rain, well, we've certainly had a lot more rainfall than what we anticipated. So if there is continued rain, there might be a timing difference with the delivery of the project, but that doesn't mean additional cost. Once again, there's a contract and there's a price for that contract.
Mr. Mayor, procedure motion to seek an extension.
Thank you. Mr. Burst.
30 minutes.
Okay, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Can I just confirm, moved councillor Veach, seconded by councillor Oliver? Are you asking a question? Okay, can I get a mover of the financial report? Okay, moved councillor Luxford, seconded.
I want to ask a question.
Okay, can I still get a second of that? Okay, seconded by, I need a second, it's just the monthly financial report. Seconded by councillor Burst, thank you. Councillor Oliver, your question.
Yes, as a new councillor, I just wanted to know if there were costs overruns on the Heffron Centre, would council be liable for all of that?
Through to the relevant officer?
There is a relevant officer, sorry.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, council does inherit some of the, the risk of the, the management and control of the project. However, if there is cost overruns, um, due to change requests or scope requests from a particular party, then that, those requests are apportioned according to the funding contribution to each party. So there's an apportionment strategy that has been, um, approved by a property advisor for this project, given the multiple funding streams. Um, and then if there's a change or an overrun in a particular item or element of the project, then the, the portionment strategy is applied to that, uh, particular item.
Thank you. There being no further questions, I'll now put it. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Okay, thank you. We now move to the motions pursuant to notice. Uh, NM two slash twenty-two, notice of motion from councillor Sedd to increase awareness against the matchable incinerator. Move councillor Sedd, do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor D'Souza. Uh, councillor Sedd?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, Mr Mayor, I will be quick. Um, the reason why I've left this in here is, I actually put this motion in nine weeks ago, so I'm just glad that we got to the, thank you for the extension, I finally got to say it. Um, with point A, what I'm trying to say there is that the Minister Keane sent a letter address to myself in December of last year, saying that the EPA has informed sewers that does not meet the exemptions under the infrastructure plan because they use natural gas, which is a better emissions profile than waste. So Minister Keane had virtually ninety percent of the way had agreed with the EPA and was virtually telling us that this would not be a great idea. Unfortunately, he didn't go a hundred percent of the way like he did with, uh, Tanya Davis MP, uh, from Eastern Creek, where he caboshed it a hundred percent of the way. So I am still, after two years of writing to him, he finally answered me in December of last year, and unfortunately, he still did not rule it out categorically. So, um, I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not quite sure who the new environment minister is, but, uh... Thank you. So if we can write to James Griffin and ask that we can cover categorically, even though Minister Keane has said that, uh, it is a better alternative because we use natural gas, but unfortunately, we just need him to say that it cannot be built because it does not even meet the specifications of being near residences. Uh, it, it does add to the atmosphere, it puts poisons in the atmosphere, and, um, we'd just like him to say, it's not gonna happen, full stop. Um, I think we've done the reaffirms of the, uh, like I said, within the nine weeks, we've, uh, reaffirmed out on our social media platforms. We had the photo shoot yesterday. Um, unfortunately, our truck did not have the no matchable incinerator emblem, which I've mentioned before in the last meeting. Um, but I'd also, also like to say, as in point C, that we acknowledge Bayside Council for putting it in January and putting up the signs, um, throughout the airport, which did have a dramatic effect. So if we can write to the Mayor of Bayside and thank them for their, um, unilateral support with our...
Councillor Sedd, that's two minutes.
Okay, that, with our brothers and sisters in Bayside. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza?
I, I think Mayor, ex-Mayor Sedd has spoken well on the matter. I'm happy to rest my case.
Thank you. Uh, no further speakers. Uh, councillor Sedd, you've now spoken, no need to close it. Okay, all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Okay. NM three slash twenty-two, councillor Sedd, installation of pedestrian traffic lights on Marine Parade opposite McKean Street. Councillor Sedd?
Do I have a seconder? Uh, Mr Mayor, whilst, uh, we all know that during summer, I've had a lot of people come up to me who are very frustrated, pedestrians and motorists, because they're trying to cross McKean Street. Unfortunately, people these days look at their phones and cross the road without looking both ways, and there's been multiple attempts of accidents. The traffic has been lined up all the way up the hill. Um, all I'm asking for is a report that the viability of putting pedestrian crossing there. If we can get money out of the state government to build these lights would be fantastic. This also does a great synergy with our new outdoor space that we're putting out there in McKean Street. It'd be fantastic thoroughfare from one side to the other and people can cross the road safely and cars can actually travel because people cross that road one at a time and a car can overpass through there. On a hot day, it's just, uh, impossible to get past. And it's also costing council a lot of money to put traffic controls there every warm weekend during summer. So if we can get a report, if we can put it to the traffic committee, and if we can ask if someone could sponsor it, and the faster that we get it, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rosenfeld?
Yes, uh, happy to second this. Uh, in my many trips down to Maruba Beach, um, I always, whenever I cross those, uh, that pedestrian crossing, I look right and I just see the bank of cars waiting. It'd be much more efficient to have a set of traffic lights there, uh, and it would be, uh, it'd be good for the pedestrians as well. And I also think it would suit the area, given that, uh, with a little bit of luck, we'll get that grant from the state government and be able to make McKean Street, uh, pedestrian only up to Fenton Avenue, and that will complement it well. So we're happy to second it. Thank you.
Councillor Chappell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just rising to oppose the motion, I mean, I think, um, this is a little premature considering we're still waiting for the McKean Street activation to happen. Um, and until we know what that's gonna look like and be like, um, I don't think we should be thinking about putting traffic lights there because we don't actually know what the situation is. Um, I also think, um, we wanna be focusing on making our neighbourhoods more walkable and pedestrian-friendly, um, and traffic lights basically to appease the traffic, to make it easier to drive down Marine Parade. Doesn't do that. It doesn't send the message to cars that driving down McKean, Marine Parade is gonna be a pain in the butt and they shouldn't do it. And that is the message we actually wanna be sending. We, we wanna be saying, don't drive around here unnecessarily, um, because this is a place that is for people walking around, people with their kids, people walking to the beach. I cross that road multiple times a day with my kids. Um, I've never found it anything, but perfectly safe to cross at the pedestrian crossing there. Um, so I don't think there's any legitimate safety concerns here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Beech?
Yeah, I won't be supporting this motion either. There's actually a lot of other areas in our LGA, uh, that are in need of, of traffic lights, and that generally goes through the traffic committee. Um, as someone who frequents that area quite a bit as well, um, the cars are actually very good at stopping at the pedestrian, uh, crossing. And the thing I worry about is that there's so many pedestrians down there, they will jaywalk. If, even if you put traffic lights there, they're gonna cross anyway. So in actual fact, traffic lights might in effect make it less safe for pedestrians because they are simply not going to, unless it's one of those super busy days on a summer weekend, they are not gonna wait for the traffic lights to turn green. They will cross anyway. I mean, it's all the surfers and it's all the people at Maruba, they're not gonna take any notice, they're gonna cross anyway. So, it's not a, I, so I live in Maruba, I live in Maruba, so it's no, all I'm saying is that...
I think we're better off just leave the councillor in silence.
I'll leave that, I will put that message to the side, but I'm, what I'm saying is that it's a, it's a great, an amazing free-spirited community, and I think on, on certain days, people are probably gonna cross anyway. Most of us jaywalk from time to time, and I think that'll be a prime, prime location. So, um, I agree, we should be prioritising pedestrians, not cars, um, and I'm not sure this is the best way to do it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lutzford? No, okay, there being no further speakers, all those in favour, all those against, I declare that carried. Okay, thank you. Uh, we will now move on to NM four slash twenty-two, notice of motion from councillor D'Souza, safe crossing near Shifley Athletics Field across Hastings Avenue.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I've got a second.
Seconded by councillor Burst.
Mr Mayor, it's been my privilege to serve the community of the South Ward for the past ten years. Nearly every day, I've had the honour of meeting our residents, hearing their stories and telling them what the council is doing to support their families. I've been so lucky to be part of a strong, structured council that is community-focused and always looking for the next big project to take on board to benefit residents. Although this may not appear to be a big project to the residents of Hastings Avenue and the surrounding area, it is very important and relevant as it addresses pedestrian safety. My motion requests council to improve pedestrian safety through investigation and implementation of devices to slow down traffic with traffic calming devices, and if need be, build a pedestrian crossing near the All Abilities Children's Playground, which I'm so proud of, which the community has requested. So I hope the councillors can consider it. So I'm asking for an investigation, implementation and improvement of public safety. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Burst? Don't have to if you don't want to.
Many times I've seen cars speeding up Hastings Avenue, um, and you've got small kids playing in the park, you've got soccer fields there as well. Um, so I think it's, it's, it should be part of all of us to look after the children of our community and, um, ensure there's a safe environment and, uh, a, a safe place to cross. So I'll certainly be supporting Noel and his motion, so thank you.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Uh, NM five slash twenty-two, notice of motion from councillor D'Souza, water safety. Councillor D'Souza, seconded by councillor Burst.
Mr Mayor, I'm aware of time, so I'll keep it short. Pretty benign, but important. Water safety is paramount in protecting our community and our coastal lifestyle. I won't get into statistics, but statistics show, new data shows that Randwick City Council has the highest rate of drownings in the state, especially among coastal councils, with thirty-four recorded over a tenure period. Anyway, all I'm asking for, Mr Mayor, is for education. I'm, I'm, I don't want punitive measures, I'm talking about education to teach and prevent further tragedies. Now, this was something council did on a regular basis before Covid. We might have gone a bit dormant, so in saying that, I'm hoping to reactivate programmes with the general manager and a team and our lifeguards who are, who were, as I say, you know, they, they, they were renowned, we know their capabilities, and if they go out and educate young students and young people at the beaches, we'll get not only better, uh, water safety measures, but also education empowers people. Education, as I say, will help young people and prevent further water tragedies. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Burst? Okay, thank you. Councillor Chappell?
Sorry, just a brief question. Isn't the substance of this motion substantively covered by the merril minute that we passed last month?
It is my interpretation that it is, however, I will refer that to the general manager for her interpretation.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I, I would have to go back to the previous merril minute, um, to look at that, but I don't think it's inconsistent.
Thank you. Uh, there being no further questions, no further speakers, I'll now happily put it. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Okay, thank you. Uh, we now move to NM eight slash twenty-two, notice of motion from councillor Burst, additional anchor points and safety equipment at Little Bay and other rock fishing locations. Moved councillor Burst, seconded by councillor D'Souza. I saw councillor D'Souza first. Councillor D'Souza. Councill, Mr, councillor Burst?
Thank you. Um, actually, if everybody could look at the screen, because this mo-, uh, this motion I put up last month, there's, there were some changes made to it. Unfortunately, those changes didn't come across into this month's, uh, viewing. So it's about, this is about angel rings, not, not anchor points. So there's quite a difference. The a-, angel rings are the big round rings you see on coastal areas. At the moment, um, due to the horrific deaths of rock fishermen across Randwick City Council, um, I'm, I would recommend the impleta-, implementation of additional angel rings to be urgently considered due to the recent events. Now, angel rings, uh, at the moment, there's fourteen angel rings across Randwick City Council. There is actually over a hundred and twenty angel rings along the Australian East Coast. Of those a hundred and twenty, they've saved over a hundred and forty lives. So an angel ring effectively saves one life if it's in location somewhere. So, um, what I'm recommending is that we double our angel rings in Randwick City Council from fourteen to twenty-eight, which means we can effectively save lives across Randwick City Council. Um, after having some consultation with, uh, Stan Costantaris and John Burgess, who are two experts in, they're basically part of the Australian National, um, Sporting Association Presidents, they're Presidents of recreational fishing alliances, South Sydney Amateur Fishing Association. Uh, John Burgess is, is effectively, um, uh, Port Botany Community Consult-, uh, Consultative Committee, um, he's Botany Bay and Port Hacking Regional Boating Advisory. So they actually put, they actually put... Oh, they're putting their hands up. Um, they, they actually put...
I think they're politely reminding you on your time.
Um, this is about life and death, so I, I ask for a little bit of, uh, uh, extension of time. So...
Councillor Burst, please continue.
Could you remove the anchor points out of there and just make them all angel rings, like on that second line? So the good thing is that Stan and, and, and John, they've actually got four or five of these angel rings ready to put up, but they, all of the angel rings are being put up in Randwick City Council, being done with Randwick City Council. So it's not like it's done on its own. Um, so they, they're happy to do those. They've got some funding from their, their, um, Australian National Sporting Fishing Association. We've also got the Lion Clubs, the Lions Club of, um, Coogee that's now prepared to put some money towards some extra angel rings in the area. And I'm sure we can work with our council staff to, um, with Stan and, and John to get these things moving and happen fairly quickly. So I'm asking for support to, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, I've got councillor D'Souza, are you content just to...? Nope, that's fine. Thank you. Councillor Chappell, then councillor Lutzford, then councillor Beech.
Sorry, thank you. And then just briefly to the motion, um, thank you, uh, for bringing that on. Um, I just note that last month we moved, uh, we supported the merril minute, which, uh, included the commitment to undertake an urgent review of rock fishing-related signage and rescue devices, including angel rings and TUI rescue tubes across the Randwick Council area. So I would anticipate, having done that a month ago, um, that our councillor officers are already working on this. Um, and my suggestion would be that, uh, and I'm obviously a new councillor, so I don't have experience of this, but that we should not go in now and say, and now you have to do four here and ten here, but we should wait for them to come back with the expert advice about where they should be and how many, um, and that having already made that decision, this decision does not need to be made.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lutzford?
I, um, concur with councillor Chappell. I do wanna commend councillor Burst for having seen the light and going with angel rings and not the horrible, um, anchor points that he proposed in the first place that were totally unsafe. Um, but we did raise this in the merril minute in the previous meeting, so we're duplicating a lot of things here tonight, I believe.
Councillor Beech?
Uh, thank you. And yeah, look, I'd also like to commend councillor Burst on his, you know, concerns about water safety. Um, but look, I'd like to propose an amendment, uh, which is to, um, delete A and B and ask, request, uh, that councillors receive, uh, a briefing, uh, on the status of, uh, installing angel rings, uh, anchor points and other water safety, uh, devices and educational signage in the Randwick LGA.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a seconder? Seconded councillor Nielsen? Can I confirm that you are deleting A and B and you're happy to...? Okay, all right.
I'm happy with the change.
All right, thank you. So A and B are now struck out. It now becomes, the motion's still in the name of Burst and D'Souza. Okay, are there any further speakers? Otherwise, I'll now put it. Uh, councillor Burst, you don't need to close the debate. Thank you. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Thank you, councillors. Uh, NM ten slash twenty-two, notice of motion from councillor Lutzford, electronic notice boards.
Yeah, 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 but, okay, so, um, I'll be moving this... Okay, so I'll be moving this motion tonight in a slightly different fashion. Okay, so it's, where am I on this one? It's there on the screen now. The council invest partnership, investigate partnerships and options for the electronic boards in town centres, so it's all there. Read the motion. So this motion came about because we discriminate against our residents who don't receive rates notices, who don't get emails, who are not on social media, and they are not able to see what goes on in other parts of our community, our local area. So by having notice boards either in bus stops or strategically placed within town centres, people will be able to see what's going on, and if they so wish to participate in council events, they may. So it's pretty simple explanatory, it explains itself, and I commend you all to support this.
Do I have a seconder to the motion? Seconded by councillor Hay. And then I'll go to you councillor Veach. Councillor Hay, do you want to speak or just...
Just very briefly. I, we had a preliminary meeting of Randwick Tourism Inc., and it was discussed that we needed a way of, let's say we have an event, instead of people just coming and, you know, coming to, say, the Australia Day, Family Fun Day, we could have signs up that tell them other things they could do within Randwick Council, and we could have a multiplier effect on public events, and, you know, come for one thing, stay for more. So it's a good idea, and it would have the support of the tourism, Randwick Tourism as well.
Thank you. councillor Veach.
I just have a question through you to the mover, if that's okay. Just clarifying what you mean by electronic notice boards. Do you sort of mean like digital displays that might, you know, have graphics and other information, or are you sort of talking about those electronic ones that are kind of on a, you see on the side of the road, advertising, like saying D2 or something like that? Or are you meeting like a more digital... Yeah. Yeah. I'm just wondering, because I know some people, and actually I confused it for those kind of chunky kind of things that you see on the side. Just maybe, would you consider changing electronic to digital perhaps? So just to clarify it more for, look, it doesn't matter, but anyway, it's just a bit more explanatory. Electronic slash digital?
Mayor, on a point of procedural motion, can we extend for another thirty minutes, please, so we can try and wrap this all up tonight?
And then we'll get through everything. Okay, there being no further speakers. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay. NM11/22, notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld, parking on broad area reserve on weekends. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Burst. Councillor Rosenfeld, you have two minutes.
Perfect. Okay, parking is an issue at Maruba Beach, as we all know, in the warmer months, particularly on the weekends. And, excuse me, and I certainly believe that if we were to make Broad Arrow Reserve available for parking as a regular fixture between November and March, it'll certainly do a lot to alleviate that issue. I visit the area quite a bit, and I do not see a lot of widespread use of the park. Indeed, a lot of residents have told me they don't like to take their dogs to the park because they find it dangerous, being bordering three main streets of Fitzgerald Avenue, Mons Avenue, and Marine Parade. I believe that if we were to provide more parking in Maruba Beach, it would be a positive to the local business community as well, as their businesses will be frequented more often. Note that this is basically only on weekends between the beginning of November and the end of March, and this is one of several measures needed to improve parking at Maruba Beach. Thank you.
councillor Burst.
Sometimes I like to challenge the white waters of Maruba Beach, and if there's surety of knowing that there's parking there, I'll certainly head down there a lot quicker. Also, it's important for the local shops to know that people will park somewhere and go shopping and eating. And if we know that it's locked in for five or six months, people know it's there and people only use some if they know it's available. So at the moment, they're not sure if one weekend or the other it's open or closed. This way they know. During summer, it's going to be open, simple as that. Thank you.
I'll go to councillor Chapel first, I saw some other hands. Could I just ask if councillors are making similar points? Feel free for their colleagues to make it for them. Thank you, councillor Chapel.
I just want to briefly speak against the motion, which will be no surprise. I think the idea that the park isn't massively overrun, therefore making it invalid, is a really false one. I think we should value open space, we should value passive recreation, and the question of whether dogs use it or don't is kind of a bit moot for this. The idea that we would allow cars in here kind of without any staff on to protect council assets, to protect the bases of the trees, to even kind of control the flow of traffic is just deeply irresponsible. And equally, the amount of resourcing required to have these open every weekend, I think would be a very poor allocation of kind of our scarce council rangers and people who are able to do that work. There's a significant amount of international work, research that shows that more parking leads to more cars. Maruba Beach currently has the most parking of any of the beaches in the eastern beaches by a fairly long shot. I mean, the parking within five hundred metres of the beach at Maruba is more than any comparable beach in the area. And there's traffic every warm weekend because people know they can get a park at Maruba. If you read all the articles online, which beach can you park at? It says Maruba, because we've already got a ton of parking. The only way to get less congestion down there would be to put a charge on it, which I think we're not going to propose to do. The idea that the local shops need more parking at this park down there is also incorrect. I mean, those shops down there do a roaring trade on summer days. The idea that they're missing out on a scarce number of customers because they can't park on existing parkland in the area is incorrect. I also think we should think about why people like coming down to Maruba. And one of the beautiful things down there is there is a bit of open space. There's the beach, there's the walk behind it, there's the parking, there's the road, and then there's some more parkland. It's not just a fully paved car park corner to corner. I think we would really lose something very precious about our area if we started turning all the rest of our parks over to parking. Thanks.
councillor Olive.
Yes, I think that if we start, if you start treating Broad Arrow Reserve like a car park, it'll become a park, car park, with people kind of mentally thinking of it that way.
Thank you. I do know we have had two for, two against. Is it a question? Make, well, sorry. Okay, unfortunately, it is what it is. I'll now, motion to put it. All those in favour? All those against? Okay. I declare that lost.
Division, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, councillor Pandefini.
Can't hear you.
councillor Pandefini.
Against.
councillor Nielsen.
Against.
councillor Veach.
Against.
councillor Hay.
For.
councillor Lutzford.
For.
councillor Chapel.
Against.
councillor Rosenfeld.
For.
councillor Olive.
Against.
councillor McCafferty. councillor Wilson.
Against.
councillor Sed.
Against.
councillor Burst.
For.
councillor D'Souza.
For.
And the mayor is against, so I declare that lost. Thank you, councillors. Okay, we now move to the next item, NM12/22, notice of motion from councillor Hay, Meek Street Plaza. Moved councillor Hay, do I have a seconder? Okay, all right, because it's notice of motion for councillor Hay, I will have councillor Hay moving it, councillor Rosenfeld seconding it, but I do acknowledge councillor Lutzford will move an amendment. Okay, councillor Hay.
Okay. The westernmost end of Meek Street was becoming closer to traffic in 2015, and just over seven years ago, the first notice of motion was moved, and this project has been limbo ever since, with temporary barriers in place on the site. The temporary barriers don't reflect the vibrancy that Kingsford once had, and we need to have a Kingsford with beauty and a proper permanent community space. Once we have that space, we can have many events such as Lunar New Year, Noodle Night Markets, and whatever else we can think of through arts and cultural events, or inclusive Randwick Committee, whatever we want. We also need to do something in Kingsford to bring life to the Kingsford shopping area. Before last month's meeting, Peter Schick called me and thanked me for moving the motion and told me there are still eighteen closed shop fronts in the Kingsford area. We also need to, because there have been a number of delays, some residents were under the impression that construction would start in March, and before the meeting, I spoke to director of city services, Mr. Clark, and he informed me that starting construction in March or April is impossible. And I'd like to move this motion so that in advance of the potential call for tenders, so that the community is appropriately updated and there is progress on this issue, and a greater level of scrutiny is appropriate given there have been lengthy delays. Thank you.
councillor Rosenfeld. Councillor Hay, you need to turn your microphone off.
Yeah, and it is a saving time, I reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. councillor Lutzford, you move your amendment?
Yeah, I have an amendment. Mr. Mayor, that council now note the project is now ready to go to public tender with constructed expected to commence mid 2022, and that council officers have completed extensive site investigations to now finalise the detailed design of the Meek Street Plaza concept, previously adopted by council. Council officers are now able to deliver more detailed project progress updates to all key stakeholders.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? So do I have a seconder, and then, do I have a seconder, and then I will go to the question? Seconded by councillor Wilson. Thank you. Councillor Wilson, I assume you don't want to speak?
Sorry, to replace councillor Hay, to remove councillor Hay and note this.
I doubt he's going to accept it, but we shall see. councillor Hay.
Can I just, can you scroll up a little, please? Just, okay. So this is to remove mine... I'm generally at mercy here. Is this... I was told when constructing motions not to amend... I'm happy that this is an extra dot point.
You'll add it as an extra dot point. Okay. There's now point B incorporated into it, which now continues. Councillor Veach, you're going to move an amendment? Is that still the case? Beg your pardon? Okay. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers. Councillor Hay, you happy to close the debate or just leave it in?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay. NM15/22, notice of motion from councillor Nielsen, paid political advertising should not be allowed on council property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillors, on your table, you will all have a couple of photos, which I took today, of the wonderful Freedom, Freedom, Freedom signs that are on the side of a council building, namely the Randwick Literary Institute. I find that offensive, not the word freedom, but the political advertising that carries this word. And my motion is simply that council immediately remove any paid political advertising on council property. And what I'm talking about in terms of paid political advertising is that council should not be allowing any paid political advertising on any of our property. I'm not talking about someone inadvertently sticking a Labour poster up or a Liberal poster or something like that. I'm talking about council receiving money from any political party, faction, group. It just seems to me to be totally wrong, and I would like you to support this. And I should also perhaps add another little bit that, well, I have actually got it there in the words, they haven't, I, immediately remove. And I think that we should be asking the general manager to remove this sign immediately. So I hope you all support this, and I hope we can get this down immediately. Because I should add that when I was supposed to be bringing this motion to your attention last month, the sign was up, the week, well, it'd been up for a while, and the day before our meeting, the sign came down, and now it's up again. So, you know, whoever can afford to pay for these signs has got a lot of cash of funds, and of course it gets defaced all the time, which doesn't help our building either. So please support this, everybody.
Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Pandefini. Are there any further speakers? Okay, we're going to go to councillor, okay, there's a few speakers. Okay, I'm going to go to Hay, then I saw Burst, then I saw Veach.
A question for the mayor. Do we have a policy against accepting paid political advertising, like, in general?
Through to the general manager.
Through, Mr. Mayor, no, no, we don't at this point in time. We do have a contract for advertising with J.C. Deco, so there's a licence agreement there. We will have to go through the licence agreement to have the sign removed and to object to the content.
Thank you. councillor Burst.
I think they led the same question. So does it mean that we could be, we could be contravening a contract with one of our clients?
Thank you to... To the general manager.
Through, Mr. Mayor, in regards to our licence agreement, within the agreement, there is a clause that says a licensor may at any time, by notice in writing, require the licensee to discontinue use, to use any piece or mode of advertising which is, in the reasonable opinion of the licensor, has become objectionable, and the licensee on receipt of the notice shall comply accordingly. So that is what's in the licence agreement, that's what we would work within in progressing this motion.
Is there, what's the value of this? Or do we have a rough value? Like, is it a lot of money we'd lose? Are we talking about losing ten grand or losing two hundred grand? You know, half a million dollars, you know, like...
Rather than not.
Through, Mr. Mayor, I don't have the figures in front of me, but I believe it's the vicinity of ten thousand.
Thank you. councillor Veach.
Yeah, I totally support this motion and thank councillor Nielsen for putting it up. It's a disgusting sign. I just wanted to know, would this motion preclude any further political advertising being put up there once this was removed? Because it's sort of, is there any way we could, the mover might strengthen it to ensure further political advertising isn't permitted to be placed there?
So you're wanting me to slightly amend the wording, so immediately remove any and continue on with a policy such as this? Yeah, yeah, so, sorry, thank you. Yeah, yeah, so, sorry, thank you.
Through you, Mr Mayor, can I make a suggestion councillor Nielsen? If you would like to ensure that future advertising contracts ensure that no paid political advertising is included within the scope, then that is what we could do, so.
It's perfect, so that would be added on to what is here and ensure that, and I'm sure Mr Kelly will have got the words from the general manager, which were spot on. And in terms of the immediacy of this action, how quickly can we get this signed down?
Madam General Manager?
How quickly can we get this signed down? Like, do we need to get them a week's notice or two days' notice or tomorrow goes?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I don't think we could have it removed tomorrow. We would have to go through the process of notification, I can't give you a timeframe.
Have it, well, what's the, we've got a couple of lawyers here. What's the legal term for pronto? Put it in Latin, come on gals.
Could expedite it perhaps?
Okay, look, thank you councillor Veitch, am I correct that you've asked your question?
I'd like a follow up question if I may, just in terms of that point B. When you say negotiating any future tenders, are you referring to the contract with the, I've forgotten which, who you said it was, yeah, with J C Deco? Shouldn't we actually be saying that there should just point blank not be any? Can't we just direct them? Direct our, direct, make a direction that there are no paid legal advertising is permitted there?
Through to the general manager.
Through you, Mr Mayor, Mr Kelly has just changed the wording from negotiating to scoping. So essentially, the scope of the tender would be advertising, which would preclude political advertising.
Okay, thank you, there being no further speakers. I will now put it, all those in favour? All those against?
Could we record that as unanimous? Because I think it is an important motion that we've passed.
Okay.
There was no opposition, was there?
I declare that as unanimous. Okay, thank you. NM20/22, notice of motion from councillor D'Souza, financial assistance from New South Wales flood victims.
Mr Mayor, I'm mindful of time and I think you've actually talked about, and you've done well with this $10,000 donation. I think my motion also, I did talk to the general manager on this and I took the part of the financial donation out, but I talked about how we can investigate assisting some of our fellow country councils in kindly aising with the local government, New South Wales. Because as the floodwaters reside, Mr Mayor, we're just beginning to see the true extent of the devastation across New South Wales and just how tough the road to recovery is going to be for many of the councils and communities. So that's all I'm asking for. As I said, you've already made a financial donation. Now I'm saying let's investigate if people in need or councils in need, if we can help them in kind or through using some of our officers' expertise, it would be wonderful. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor D'Souza, councillor Burst? Thank you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. I believe that that is the last of the notices of motion. As a result, we now move into closed session to deal with CS12/22. I'll just let the...